Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, welcome. I apologize we're running a little bit late, but it's good to see so many of you. This is the April 28th, 2025 work session of the Board of Education of Charles County. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, thank you very much. And first up is one of the highlights for us as a board, which is to recognize our many state award winners. All right, Dr. Navarro, will this be...
Yes.
Who will be taking...
Who's taking the lead?
Who's it... Oh, there we go. Mr. Tuttle.
Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Each school year, three Charles County seniors are selected to serve as a Maryland General Assembly student page. This year, students were chosen in October based on their interest and qualifications. Each of these students spent two separate weeks of the 2025 Legislative Session in Annapolis, working with other student pages, meeting legislators, and attending sessions of the House of Delegates and Senate. The student pages for the 2024-25 school year are Imani Rhines, Maurice J. McDonough High School, Principal Darnell Russell.
Board members, could we just line up here to greet them?
(applause)
Careful there, congratulations. Our second student page is Ava Rolidge, Maurice J. McDonough High School, Principal Darnell Russell. And our third student page is Giselle Tremenio Reyes, Westlake High School, Principal Dana Fenwick.
My name is Kristin Moats. I'm the Gifted Content Specialist for Charles County Public Schools, and I'm also the Blue Crab Destination Imagination Regional Director. So I'm honored today to present awards for two categories, and I'm starting off with our Destination Imagination state winners. On Saturday, March 15th, 2025, 31 Destination Imagination teams from Charles County Blue Crab Region were among the 106 teams competing at the Maryland Destination Imagination Tournament held at UMBC. I am proud to announce that three Charles County Blue Crab Region teams earned first place in their respective challenges. These teams will now advance to the 2025 Destination Imagination Global Finals, where they will showcase their creativity, critical thinking, and collaboration skills on an international stage, which will be held in Kansas City, Missouri from May 22nd through May 26th. At this time, I invite the principals of the winning schools to join me at the podium to recognize and celebrate their teams. From Billingsley Elementary School with Principal Sabrina Robinson-Taylor, we recognize the Billingsley Imaginators.[313.14][313.14](applause) Members include Jacob Bryan, Joshua Fontenot, Jace McAlwin, Melody Pierce, Cody Simmons, Austin Voe, and Emma Voe.
Congratulations.
That's my... From Picklewaxen Middle School with Principal Wulanda Thinstead, we recognize the Picko Pioneers of the PBJ Planet.[362.56][362.56](applause) The Picko Pioneers of the PBJ Planet is led by Team Manager Valerie Cook. Team members include Haley Cook, Chloe Hill, Landry James, Lilia Metz, and Charles Shaker.[399.12][399.12](applause) From Milton M. Summers Middle School with Principal Gary Lesko, we recognize the Summers The Summers Curbside Chickens is led by Team Managers Jessica Elliott and Lee Faulkner. Team members include Leanna DiLeonard, Gwendolyn Elliott, Karina Elliott, Jason Faulkner, Emma Mackey, Arton Malkazian, Malkazian, and Natalie McCune.[448.78][448.78](applause) We are incredibly proud of these students and their commitment to innovation, perseverance, and teamwork. In addition to our Destination Imagination accomplishments, I'm also proud to present another area of excellence. Each year, the Maryland State Advisory Council on Gifted and Talented Education honors outstanding students, educators, and community stakeholders across the state. This year, five Charles County public students were recognized for their exemplary achievements at the 2025 Celebrating Gifted and Talented Education in Maryland Awards Ceremony, held on February 22nd. Students were nominated by their learning resource teachers for demonstrating high academic performance, participation in a gifted education program, and receiving recognition at the school, state, or national level. I now invite these principals to join me at the podium as we honor these exceptional students. Starting with Dr. James Crete Elementary School with Principal Jason Deal, we congratulate 5th grade students Rose Crowley[525.41][525.41](applause) and Violet Mud[534.04][534.04](applause) who received an honorable mention for student accomplishment and gifted and talented Representing Berry Elementary School with Principal Leanne McLaw, we recognize 4th grade student Erin Parcar, recipient of the Student Accomplishment and Gifted and Talented Education Award.[580.85][580.85](applause) And representing Picklewaxen Middle School with Principal Wulanda Thinstead, we celebrate 8th grade students Liam Gibney[614.12][614.12](applause) and Drake Scott[622.00][622.00](applause) both recipients of the Student Accomplishment and Gifted and Talented Education Award. Please join me in applauding all of our Destination Imagination teams and gifted and talented student honorees for their outstanding achievements. They are a testament to the creativity, dedication, and excellence that define Charles County
Good afternoon. I'm Sandy Rooney, the Career Technical Education Content Specialist. I'm honored to recognize three different groups of students who won at our state competitions. Sea Perch is an innovative underwater robotics program offered by the Office of Naval Research aimed to prepare the next generation of naval architects. Students design, build, and race a remotely operated vehicle through a complex obstacle course. Teams are evaluated on vehicle performance and a technical research paper. William A. Diggs Elementary School, Team Lionfish, won Best Overall Team at the Maryland Sea Perch Robotics Competition, held on March 22nd at St. Charles High School. Team Lionfish is a two-time consecutive first-place awardee and will advance to the International Sea Perch Robotics Competition to be held on June 1st at the University of Maryland College Park campus. Team Lionfish, first overall place team with Principal Benjamin Harrington, coaches Tracy Davis, Erica Bliss, and Mike Johnson. And the team members of this 5th grade team are Sebastian Manchigo, Yaden Tamrat, and Next up, Skills USA. Skills USA is the number-one workforce development organization for students. It empowers students to become skilled professionals, career-ready leaders, and responsible community members, representing over 413,000 career and technical education students and teachers. Skills USA chapters thrive in middle, high schools, and college post-secondary institutions nationwide. Their mission is accomplished through the Skills USA framework of personal skills, workplace skills, and technical skills grounded in academics, which is integrated into their classroom curriculum. The Maryland Skills USA State Competition was held at the Carroll County Career and Technology Center on March 28th and 29th in Westminster, Maryland. Competitors who have won a gold medal have earned their place at the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference on June 23rd through 27th in Atlanta, Georgia. Representing the Robert D. Steadam Educational Center, Principal Corey Dobbins, led by Chapter Advisor Darian Prince, gold medalist in First Aid and CPR Shaylin Oaks.[823.31][823.31](applause) Representing North Point High School, Principal Daniel Capel, Chapter Advisor Ron Scott, gold medalist for Advertising Design Jamie Sero, Career Pathways Showcase, this three-person team for Industrial and Engineering Technology Sydney Diggs[865.93][865.93](applause) and Mia Ubre[886.31][886.31](applause) The next set of students being recognized is for the Health Occupation Students of America Competition. Better known as HOSA, it is a global student-led organization recognized by the U.S. Department of Education and the Department of Health and Human Services and several federal and state agencies. HOSA's mission is to empower HOSA future health professionals to become leaders in the global health community through education, collaboration, and experience. HOSA actively promotes career opportunities in the health industry and to enhance the delivery of quality health care to all people. We have a number of students who competed in the state competition virtually, which took place from January through March, and seven students were awarded positions to represent Maryland at the national competition this June in Nashville, Tennessee. North Point High School, Principal Daniel Capel, sponsors Jill Bodemer, Heidi Ordolano, and Megan O'Vork. for CPR and First Aid Heaven Linton[1017.04][1017.04](applause) for medical reading Mabel Brandtuo[1038.93][1038.93](applause) and for nursing assisting Larissa Miller[1051.97][1051.97](applause) Congratulations to our students moving on.[1081.01][1081.01](applause)
The next group of students that we would like to recognize are Maryland State Thespians, and they competed at the Maryland State Thesbian Festival. This is a high school theater production with Henry Ilacki, La Plata High School, Maurice J. McDonough, North Point, St. Charles, Thomas Stone, and Westlake. All competed with students from 34 other high schools across the state of Maryland. The festival featured over 300 workshops led by industry leaders, and more than 15 one-act performances, individual competitions, college auditions, and also scholarship auditions. These students will be participating in June at the International Festival.
From La Plata High School, under Principal Doug Dolan and Theater Teacher Jennifer Joyner,
From Maurice J. McDonough High School, Principal Darnell Russell, Theater Teacher Jana Heil, for solo performance in solo musical theater Brett Wood, for solo musical theater Michaela Nairn, and for solo acting Leila Dodson, duet musical theater Michaela Nairn and Brett Wood, costume design Maya Sellers, and theater marketing Ada Donahue. And those are the students from McDonough High School.[1210.01][1210.01](applause) From North Point High School, under Principal Daniel Capel and Theater Teacher Tessa Silvestro, and again for solo musical theater Jordan Harmon[1246.93][1246.93](applause) and for short film documentary David Morris[1269.83][1269.83](applause) from Westlake High School, under Principal Dana Fenwick, and Theater Teachers Brian
Okay, the next group that we would like to honor today are the students who were selected to the Maryland All-State Band Chorus and Orchestra. These students auditioned in November, competing against hundreds of students around the state of Maryland for a position in the All-State Band Chorus and Orchestra. Students rehearsed and performed at the Maryland State Music Educators Conference at Morgan State University in Baltimore the weekend of March 7th.
From La Plata High School, under Principal Doug Dolan, band and orchestra teacher Wesley Harler, and choir teacher Stephanie Joya Ellie, for senior mixed chorus, Joe Cox[1353.51][1353.51](applause) and for senior orchestra Elizabeth Tober[1402.01][1402.01](applause) from Maurice J. McDonough High School, under Principal Darnell Russell, and orchestra and from North Point High School, under Principal Daniel Capel, and choir director Kristin Helming, for senior mixed chorus Mitchell Lewis IV[1468.75][1468.75](applause) for senior mixed chorus Emmett Lloyd[1476.38][1476.38](applause) and those are the students from North Point High School. For Westlake High School, under Principal Dana Fenwick and choir director Mark Pavlicek, for senior mixed chorus Sanaya Bazemore[1535.88][1535.88](applause) for senior mixed chorus Gavin Cosio[1548.51][1548.51](applause) for senior mixed chorus Anaya Gill[1558.47][1558.47](applause) and for senior treble chorus Taylor Richardson[1568.15][1568.15](applause) and once again, congratulations to these students on their accomplishments for the Maryland All-State Band Chorus and Orchestra.[1581.15][1581.15](applause)
Good afternoon. My name is Rich Powley. I'm the Director of Student Activities, Athletics, and Aquatics. I'm here today, I'm very proud, to present our winter individual and team state champions. Becoming a state champion is a challenging goal that requires dedication, hard work, and perseverance. It is the culmination of all of these athletes' hard work coming to fruition. It is my pleasure to start it off presenting for Henry E. Lackey, Principal Cheryl Davis.
It is my pleasure to introduce men's wrestling 1A, 2A state champion Ethan Vero.[1633.88][1633.88](applause) My pleasure to introduce boys indoor track 2A state champion Michael Simmons Shotput.[1648.01][1648.01](applause)
Next up, from La Plata High School, Principal Douglas Dolan, presenting athletic director Mr. Chris Butler.[1674.88][1674.88](applause)
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I'm excited to introduce La Plata High School's individual and team state champions this year. First, we have in the 400 freestyle swimming relay, Mr. Jackson Donick[1695.33][1695.33](applause) also a member of the 400-meter freestyle relay, Alexander Myers[1704.51][1704.51](applause) and next we have also a member of the 400-meter relay, Clinton Couples.[1713.88][1713.88](applause) I told Clinton to walk slowly because I had a few other things to announce about Mr. Clinton Couples. He was also won two individual state titles in the pool this year. He won the 50 freestyle and the 100 butterfly.[1730.88][1730.88](applause) Congratulations, Clinton.[1734.25][1734.25](applause) These young men are coached by head coach Miss Mary Jane Couples.[1741.47][1741.47](applause) And next, we have a very special group of people, the Bachi State Championship Team from La Plata High School.[1756.25][1756.25](applause) Our first Bachi member that won the state title this year, Miss Morgan Grove[1764.15][1764.15](applause) Miss Abigail Kirby. Oh, she wanted me to say Abby. Abby Kirby.[1774.25][1774.25](applause) Miss Lily Hotson[1779.01][1779.01](applause) and Mr. Aiden Drum.[1785.72][1785.72](applause) The Bachi team is coached by Miss Stephanie Barry.[1793.38][1793.38](applause) There were four members of the team that couldn't make it this evening, Leila Escalante... There were four members of the team that couldn't make it this evening, Leila Escalante, Rachel Peterson, Sophie Payne, and Sophie Hunt. Congratulations to them. I'd add, one more thing I'd like to announce, we had a female state champion on the swim team this year. Ms. Jadeen Woolsey won the 50 freestyle and is unable to attend tonight because she's playing lacrosse. So we're running back to La Plata to go watch some lacrosse. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have from McDonough High School, Principal Darnell Russell and athletic director Pamela Thornton Miller.
It is my distinct honor to introduce you to our 2A girls high jump champion Olivia St. Ville. Olivia outjumped her competitors at a height of five foot four and could have kept going, but she didn't have any competition at that point, so. Great job. And her coach, Coach Ridwin Cole. Congratulations. I'm also excited to introduce you to our unified Bachi state champions. First up, we have Sebastian Romero. And James Taft. And their coach, Coach David Bradshaw. Thank you very much.
And next we have North Point High School, under principal Daniel Capel, and introducing athletic director, Mr. Andy Shattuck.
Thank you, Mr. Powley. We've been very fortunate at North Point High School this year, as we have two state championship teams in the winter, two individual state champions in addition to our football state championship from the fall, so it's been an outstanding year at North Point High School, very proud of our student athletes. The first young man I'd like to introduce is Austin Wood, Austin is not able to be here today, he was our state champion wrestler in the 120-pound weight class, he's playing baseball down at Leonard Town today, so Austin cannot be with us. Additionally, our indoor track, female indoor track athlete Corinne Corbin also cannot be here today, she's a state champion in 300-meter and the 55-meter dash, that's Corinne Corbin. We have a few members of our Special Olympics of Maryland State Unified Bachi Tournament team that won gold medal at the state tournament this year, I'd like to introduce them. First, we have Darrell Hancock. Next is Emily Herscher. We have Aiden Metzger. Tafari Perry. Carly Roberts. And Landon Smith. And they're coached by Charlie Birch. Our girls basketball team defeated Baltimore Western in the state championship game by a score of 61 to 30 in dominant fashion, but more importantly, I think, to Mr. Capel and myself, is they were also honored as the tournament winner of the sportsmanship award awarded to the team chosen as the best sportsman of the tournament, so we're very proud of that as well. It doesn't appear that they're all here today, but I will go ahead and announce them, Kalici Alici. Carrington Boyd. Carson Burwell. Dottie Eaton. Trinity Howard, I know Trinity's playing tennis right now. Amorachi Igizi. Demi Lathan. Chelsea Pratt. Kalen Rap. Kamani Smith. Leila Woodward. And then we have managers Renee Carr. Ashlyn Lalani. London Leek. Shanita Savoy. And Ashley Valencia Lazo. Our coaches are in attendance today, Malik Lawrence. I'd like to note that Malik was also a coach on our state football championship staff, so we're going to keep Malik on every coach, every staff that we can get him to coach on. Mace Adams. Paige Sapon. And our head coach Mike Sapon. If you'll allow me, I would also be remiss if I did not mention another student athlete that we are supremely proud of at North Point High School this year. In addition to serving here as the voting member of the Charles County School Board, Sam Burke has been a four-year at student athlete at North Point High School in the fall for cross-country, winter for indoor track, and in the spring for outdoor track. He's been a very busy young man, he's represented North Point High School with a lot of class and character, we're very proud of you, Sam.
All right, next we have St. Charles High School, under principal Tamika Little, introducing those students will be Ms. Danielle Carpenter.
Good evening. It is my distinct and proud pleasure to introduce you all to Destiny Jordan, your 3A state champion for girls shot put. Destiny won with a shot put throw of 38 feet 8 inches. And we would be remiss without also recognizing her coach Katie Shuby, our head indoor track coach.
All right, and our final school of the night, Westlake High School, under principal Dana Fenwick, presenting students will be Assistant Principal Ms. Shakia Hockett.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the moment we've all been waiting for, our Westlake champions. So tonight, I am honored to acknowledge our amazing state cheerleading champions. On February 25th of this year, our state, our cheerleaders competed in the MPSSC cheerleading competition in the 2A division, and they brought back our state championship. And so now, I'd like to recognize Mia Bensel. Joshua Davis. Zaya Davis. Deja Duckett. Mariah Eckert. Mackenzie Lawrence. Camille Malden. Kanaya Myers. And last but not least, Mackenzie Williams. And just a little something about Mackenzie, they only give away two scholarships to high school students in the state of Maryland, Mackenzie is one of those recipients, congratulations, baby girl. And I would be remiss without recognizing our amazing coach, Ms. Yolanda Stennett, who worked very hard to bring our students to the state championship. Thank you so much, coach. All right, and now, I'd like to introduce our boys indoor track state champions. On February 21st, they competed at the Prince George's County Sports and Learning Complex in Landover, Maryland, and they won in two amazing heats, which is the 4x200-meter race and the 4x400-meter relay. And so now, I would like to recognize Mr. Caleb Phillips. James Francis. Chase Francis. Dewan Proctor. Quentin Meek. David Buco. Christian Wilbon. Kalechi Anyawu. And Noah Hospitalis. Congratulations to our two winter sports championship teams.
Thank you, board members, and congratulations to all the state champions this year.
Okay, well, thank you all for joining us. We try not to take it personally that you leave as soon as the state of champions are announced. Yes, please, look, two or millions still watching. Kyle, can you take us off the air until 6:00 PM, please, we'll be on a break? Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. This, again, is the April 28th work session of the Board of Education of Charles County, Maryland. Next up is public forum. Do we have any speakers, Mr. Schwartz or Ms. Mackey? No speakers, all right. Thank you very much. Moving right along to the school climate update, I believe that will be Dr. Marvin Jones. Welcome, Dr. Jones.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Board Chair Person Moore Lee, Vice Chair Kramer, Board members, Dr. Navarro, good afternoon. All right, so I am here this evening and joined by Dr. Blanchard, the, I almost said chief, I'm sorry, Dr. Blanchard is the Director of Student Services, and so we are going to speak with you tonight regarding the state of Charles County Public Schools in relation to school climate. This is an annual presentation for us, and I will preface it with, I'm aware that you've had an opportunity to at least preview it, and so we won't go through it line by line, we will hit the highlights and then leave plenty of time for questions at the end, if that's all right with you guys.
Sure.
All right, so our why and our goal, as we call it, again, we won't run through all of these items that you see here, but our goal really is to be as transparent as what we can about our data, and then sharing information, we believe it does prevent poor choices and informs, and identifies intervention opportunities, and then, of course, builds trust among our community, assists, acknowledges, as you can see there, and again, I won't go line by line, but this is our goal and this is our why, recognizing that evolution is inevitable and growth is attainable, success is the goal, and we are all in this together. So this evening, there are a number of items that are in this PowerPoint, again, it's extensive, and so we won't go line by line, but, so I'll share with you just the presentation order here. At this time, we are going to talk a little bit about this, how school climate is measured, we're going to share some data, we'll go through some excerpts from the code of conduct, or we'll have a discussion about where we are with the code of student conduct, we will talk about student behavioral health and wellness, and then what we're doing to prevent, reduce, and address student discipline. Again, recognizing that students are not giving us a hard time, they're having a hard time, and that's a tough pill to swallow, but sometimes, on some days, but, but we don't believe that our students wake up in the morning and say, today is the day that I'm going to school, I'm going to give them a hard time, this is my charge. We think that they are having a hard time and we have to work with them on how we can do better. So how school climate will be measured, there are two main ways to measure school climate, of course, the quantitative and the qualitative. Quantitative is, you know, that's pretty self-explanatory, numerically measured, and then the qualitative is just as important, it is the feelings and the observations, staff morale, you know, you can measure your school climate based on, you know, how many of your staff members volunteer for opportunities after hours, these are the two general areas that we use to measure school climate, and we'll keep going, and let's look at some data. We threw these quotes in here just because we think they are a little bit impactful, so just to go through that, we don't get to decide whether we have challenged students in our classes, but we can certainly decide how we respond to them. Again, our charge, but just to review, and that just sort of grounds us in this work. But to look at some of the data, we typically do a three-year comparison, and so, so we've set the date range here, and you will recall that the date range for us stops right around that second week of March, ever since we started looking at this around the time of COVID, and so, so that's the reason that we look at that, those, that, that date range ending, and not really ending, we don't stop collecting data, but, but for the purposes of this particular presentation, we stop it at the second week of March. And then looking at disciplinary violations, so the triangle there is not, or shouldn't be, an unfamiliar image, but we do believe that's one that is worth repeating, and in full transparency, there are several slides in this deck that are worth repeating, we believe, and this one being one of them, it does show the current year, so this school year's disciplinary violations in an image here that we hope stands out, the orange part of that triangle stands out as our students who have no violations, or many of our students have no violations, many more than those who do, 81%, and then those who have one to two violations up to this point equals about 11%, and then 3+ is a smaller darker gray part of that triangle there, which is not unlike, as you'll see here coming soon, not unlike previous years. So, looking right at that, the previous year is a three-year comparison, you'll see across the bottom, no violations, one to two violations at the bottom of the graph, and then on the right side, the 3+ violations, the darker blue is three years ago, and then, of course, the lighter gray is the current year, and so we are slightly up with students that have no violations, which is good, and we're slightly down, students who have one to two, and slightly down for those who have 3+, and so we do believe that that's an image worth talking about, going up in the right areas, going down in the right areas, albeit minor, worth noting. Areas of growth, and again, this is a part of that transparency, there are some areas for growth and improvement that we certainly recognize, and again, I won't go through all of these, but as you can see them, I will call your attention maybe to a couple of these. One that gets a lot of press here, here lately, has gotten a lot of press here lately, is the one that says proper intervention of teachers and altercations, and in parentheses the one that says proper intervention of teachers and altercations, and in parentheses, their own safety being first priority. So it's an area that we are recognizing that we want to grow in, because while teachers, their first instinct in most cases is to physically intervene when there is a physical altercation of some sort going on, we want our teachers to take their own safety in regard first, and of course, we want them to do what they can to help diffuse the situation, but that might, we might recommend that they yell, scream, or holler, or get on the walkie-talkie, or whatever it might be, to get some help as opposed to jumping right in and getting themselves hurt. That's something that comes up periodically, so just to state our position on that, we appreciate the sentiments, but take care of yourself. Predicting and controlling the behaviors of our most challenging and youngest learners. So therein lies a serious challenge, one that we work hard to, I guess, refute every day with training, and, you know, I'll go through some of that here shortly, but I think I've stalled enough for you to read through the rest of those bullets. I just wanted to point out a couple of those, maybe one more, discouraging the glorification of unacceptable behavior. That is something that happens by way of social media, or, you know, kids in schools sometimes videotaping things, or whatever it might be, just really enjoying the inappropriate things that come up. And so our charge is to discourage the glorification of those kinds of things. So looking at the parameters for addressing student discipline, this is always an important one, important slide to share, we believe, because contrary to popular belief, we aren't able to just up the ante on whatever the consequences are as far as we want to go when it comes to student misbehavior. We do have to follow certain rules and guidelines, and it starts from the very top, at the federal level, and then it does trickle down to the state level, state laws and regulations. Then, of course, the MSDE policies, local board policies and procedures, which trickles down to us creating a Code of Student Conduct in the building. And this is, this process is the same for every school system in Maryland, as far as how, the parameters that we have to go by in order to be sure we have a document that fairly addresses student behavior. Violations, comparisons, so if you can see that, the print is kind of small, but perhaps you can blow it up on your screens there, but just to sort of give an idea of the areas that we have the most challenges in versus the least challenges in, the violations, again, the dark blue is 2020, is three years ago, 22, 23, then last year is the orange, and then this year is the light gray. So the areas that we have the most difficulties hasn't changed a whole lot, although we do celebrate that major disruption has gone down just a little bit, major disruption, major disrespect, I'm sorry, major disruption as well has gone down a little bit, same with major fighting, just a little bit. But then, of course, there are the areas that we are really concerned about, major drugs and controlled substances has gone up. You see, it was 104, it looks like, and now it's 133, an area that we are most certainly concerned about. The others across the bottom, and we'll get to another slide here that'll spell some things out a little more specifically, but over to the right side of that graph, major physical attack on adults, major physical attack on students, those are areas that we are really concerned about, and areas that we are focusing some of our trainings with our administrators on, because, again, safety, everyone's physical safety just has to be the number one priority, but those challenges are becoming greater and greater, and so it's incumbent upon us to keep working to address those areas. I purposely skipped over the weapons and violations there with guns, because I wanted to show you the next slide here to see that one. See that one a little, this is weapons violations, I'm sorry, so the next slide, a couple slides later, you'll see what I'm talking about there. But just to go, kind of go through weapons violations comparisons, again, we are concerned that these numbers are still hovering a little too high, so this is from real weapons to toy weapons to, you know, the, from gun-like, look-alikes to knives and all of that. So just kind of see where we are there, but let me, let me just sort of jump to the, sorry. Okay. I wanted to show you the weapons one, because I know that's, well, here it is here, so I'm sorry. So in, on this particular slide, this is slide.
What slide?
Thirteen, slide thirteen, I apologize, slide thirteen. So slide thirteen, weapons violations, major firearms, major other guns, and major other weapons. So major firearms are real, live guns, whether they're loaded or not. So you see in 22, 23, we didn't have any. In 23, 24, we had one. And then in this year, we had one up until the second week of March, but you see in parentheses, the plus two, and those are the most recent ones that you've heard about at Billingsley and Westlake, I don't think those are a secret. And so those are the concerns there, the major, the, yeah, so those are the areas that we are concerned about, the weapons in general, but obviously, the major guns. And so that's what this chart here, this is back on slide 12, the one that I skipped over before, the three areas in the middle that are very low, those numbers, you want them to be low, but you want them to be invisible, truthfully told, those are your major firearms, your major other guns, and your major other weapons. So I'm going to keep going to slide 14 now, disposition comparison, and so what happens when students get in trouble? So these are the things that happen the most, the parent contact is the one that you see is the highest, and that is pretty consistent, on down to students being suspended all the way over to the right, suspended, out of school, or extended suspensions, suspensions to the superintendent. Keeping it moving on to slide 15, percentage violations by school level, so elementary versus middle versus high, you'll see on this chart, the dark blue is two years ago, the gray is right now, and obviously, the orange is last year, so the three, the sets of three, the set on the left is elementary, the set in the middle is middle, and of course, the set on the right side are high school students. And so the high school numbers have dropped just a little. You'll see the middle school has dropped just a little, but elementary has gone up just a little, as it relates to some of the behaviors. So looking, again, I'm just giving you the raw data, that's all. Exclusionary comparisons, again, this is slide number 16. So you're looking at out-of-school suspensions and the suspension to the superintendent, so you would expect that the orange numbers, the suspension to the superintendent, to be smaller numbers, but you see that they hover, you know, right around the same area there, but again, just the visual that we are addressing those students who need to be suspended by excluding them for certain amounts of time. So this one, this slide 17, this is the Code of Conduct excerpt that I mentioned earlier. Again, we are, every year, we take a look at the Code of Conduct to determine if there are some revisions that need to be made, revisions that will remain within the parameters that we are permitted. And so this particular slide, again, on the left side of it, it simply shows a sampling of some of the revisions we made when we looked at the Code of Conduct last year. So in some areas, when a student got into some trouble, the level of discipline you could begin to look at when addressing it, it may have started at a one, whereas now it may now start as a two or a three, and then go up beyond there. And then the right side of that chart really just spells out what those levels are, levels one through five, and so the highlighted portions of them really just speak to the major part of what that discipline looks like, classroom management strategies, those level one, obviously, they're handled in the classroom by the teacher. Level two, you talk about student support systems, so the parents may be involved in those. When you get to level three, you're looking at a short-term removal, perhaps from the classroom. And then four and five, you're talking about suspension, short-term, one to three days, long-term, four to 10 days, and then anything beyond that is considered an extended suspension between 11 and 44 days, and the hearing officer can make those decisions, not the school principal. And so that was the raw data there that just wanted to share, and again, kind of running through it, because I know you've already seen it, but let me let Dr. Blanchard jump in and talk about some of our student behavioral health and wellness things that we're working on. Dr. Blanchard.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to our board, Dr. Navarro, Mr. Lowndes, Dr. Jones, senior leadership team, because you've been so incredibly supportive over the years with student services and all the mental and behavioral health supports we're putting into place for students. I know many of you have seen these slides before, so I'm just going to point out maybe a couple pieces that are a bit unique from previous reports. Science of Suicide is a program we do in all of our high schools. Now, you may say, what is TMHA? What is exactly that? I see numbers for everything else, but what's that? That is called Teen Mental Health First Aid. That's a pilot program we began at Lackey and Westlake in the fall. That's through the Maryland Mental Health Association, it's part of a grant that we received a couple of years ago. And now, actually, I'm excited to say, we're actually doing it in all seven of our high schools, because we've actually trained health teachers in all of our high schools, will now be delivering that curriculum this spring and continuing the next fall with that. Baseline, now, we've talked about baseline before. Baseline is a screening tool that's provided to all of our middle and high school students, so ballpark 12,000 students, to get a sense of in these four major areas, how they're perceiving the culture and climate of their school buildings. If you look at statistics, we're seeing small growth across all areas except for, well, the lowest growth area is engagement, that's student engagement and instruction and activities in the school building. We're seeing growth, but it's very small growth, but overall, when you're doing populations of 12,000 students, it's going to be very hard to see major changes one way or the other, so this is positive over a three-year timeframe, both assessing students in the fall and in the spring, we are noticing that students are having more and more positive perceptions of their school environment. These are the screens and assessments that we do, our school counselors and school psychologists complete, you can see the numbers over a, actually, a four-year timeframe now. These are incomplete numbers, obviously, so they'll be unfortunately a little bit higher. This is the time year where we do tend to see those numbers grow a little bit with finals coming up, graduation, summer months coming up, we do see a bit of a growth in those areas. This is something I'm very excited about, is we have seen significant improvements in our recruiting and retention specifically of school counselors. So one day, I'm talking to Mr. Lowndes, he goes, hey, have you thought about maybe hiring some social workers? I said, that's a great idea, let's take a look at that. So that has definitely helped us in improving, because we're using them in addition to school counselors. Last year, at this time, it was minus 16, now it's minus nine, so we've seen about a 50% growth, Ms. Majors, thank you for all your help, and HR's help with that. And overall, we have seen an improvement of six and a half staff members of recruiting and retaining them, so we're excited about that number. And here's some of the behavioral health services provided by staff, you've heard these things before, the last one is important. You'll hear a presentation in a month or two in reference to community schools, but what we're doing with community schools isn't just outreach to the community, but also helping in our school buildings. And one of the ways we're doing that is hiring some behavior support specialists. So this year, at Dr. Mudd, JP Ryan, Eva Turner, Dr. Brown, and Indian Head, we've hired behavioral health specialists that are now currently working in those school buildings between now and the end of the school year. So behavioral health services, what do we provide? You name it, we're providing it. There's a wide range of things that we're providing in our school buildings. The thing we're most excited about is with the growth of behavioral support specialists are, one of the hugest, biggest concerns, and I'm sure Sean can speak to this through the ACC, is our teachers are saying, how do we, these kids' behaviors are so difficult, how do we manage that in our classroom? So we're bringing folks in to help do some observations, some data collection, developing some plans to kind of help more extreme behaviors in the classroom, to allow our teachers to teach in the classroom versus having to manage those behaviors on a daily basis. Dr. Jones.
And so then, then what are we doing? And so let us just give you a sampling of what we're doing. So we are actively referring families to the Charles County Mediation Center out of the College of Southern Maryland, this group does work with us to work with the families and having them come together and help us to resolve some of the students' issues. It's a voluntary thing, but we promote it, and we try to get families to participate. We promote mentor partnerships. What you don't see here as well, we also promote our peer-to-peer mediation program. We do have almost all of our secondary schools trained, all of our youth engagement advocates are trained, and I do believe we have upwards of four or five of our schools who are actively using our peer mediation services, and again, that one is not mentioned, not mentioned on this particular slide, but I just wanted you to know that these are some of the efforts that are ongoing. Again, we actively are working with schools to ensure that their school climate is a part of their school improvement plans, so that it's not on the back burner, it's just as important, in our view, as the academic program. The convening of the Code of Student Conduct Committee, that's an annual convening, and it is, it has been convened for this year, we have several meetings on the books, and again, consist of lots of stakeholders, and the charge is to go through the entire document, again, with a fresh set of eyes. Each year, we do that, and then recommend changes based on the parameters that we are permitted to go up to. And then we are certainly directing our administrators to, our assistant principals in particular, to take on projects as a part of their evaluation program that speak to some of their work in the buildings to help improve school climate. And then there's regular professional development that we provide for our principals, and so we do this at our principals' meeting, we did it at our summer institute, our Leadership Institute last summer, we'll do that again, and so we have another session coming up here next month. So the goal there is to, you know, keep our administrators in a place where their efforts to apply the Code of Conduct looks very consistent across schools, consistent as what is reasonable and appropriate, calibrating our efforts, if you will. So that's a part of the professional development. And then lastly, so that's a lot of the work that the adults are doing, so then the final question is, you know, what can we ask our students to do? And students, we, if you're hearing me, we are making this plea to you, we're asking you to follow the established tier-one school-based behavior expectations. So what is that, students are hearing? Tier one what? So that is the behavioral program that applies to the entire building. And so whatever that looks like, following the rules is all that really is. Recognizing students when things are going wrong. When things are going wrong, you all know it before we do, students. And so when they are taking a wrong turn, do something different before it's too late, because when you're in it, you're in it, and the consequences that come, come. Self-advocate, be vocal and intentional about seeking out help when, again, those situations are beginning to spiral. When something goes wrong, take ownership, learn from it, move on. Comply when the adults are trying to assist, again, adults, we want you to be safe, but when you are trying to assist, students are certainly expected to comply. Discourage or disassociate from anyone who you know are troublemakers, that's what they are wanting to be about or trying to get into, make a better choice, learn from your mistakes, move on, and then start the next day fresh. That's the advice that we would give to our students and our families, we would love your support in that regard as well. And thank you for letting us rush through that. So now we will open it up to questions.
Let me start by saying I love the word rabble-rouser. It's one of my favorites. Thank you both, Dr. Blanchard, Dr. Jones, excellent presentation. Mr. Verk, you had something?
Thank you, Dr. Jones and Dr. Blanchard, amazing presentation.
Turn the mic, yeah. Let me tip it up, yeah. Is it on? Or maybe tilt it towards you, so we can hear you. Tilt it forward, maybe. Or take it, yeah, maybe even hold it, yeah. There we go.
Check?
There we go. We're back.
Thank you for your presentation, and it's great to see how we're doing in terms of behavior infractions and student perception of how the school is doing as well. One thing that I didn't notice in the goals was increasing incentives for positive behavior, because one thing we focus on a lot while looking at behavior is how to punish behavior, how to discourage bad behavior, and that's the goal of the Code of Conduct, and that's the goal of rules. And that's a very important thing to do, and a thing that we usually do quite effectively, but I think that it's really important to also focus on the 80% to make sure they don't just trip over to the lower parts, the 10% and the 13%, the very small fraction used to be part of that 80% as well at some point, you know? And one thing that I, it really brought to my mind was what we already do to positively reinforce good behavior, a lot of that is kind of, you know, how schools have their token economies, they have their eagle bucks, wolverine bucks.
PBIS.
Yeah, their PBIS things, and that's something I feel like sometimes I'm seeing less of in my school, I'm not sure. In my school, I'm not sure how students have fared in their own experience across the county, but one thing I do want to talk about is, having talked to students from across the county, I was speaking to, I think it was a student from Thomas Stone at a general assembly, and he was like, man, only if they could bring back Cougar Time. And that, that really brought back, like, flashbacks for me because I hear this pretty much from just about every high school student because North Point had what we used to call NEST.
Yeah, remember NEST?
We had our, one at our free lunch. Westlake had their Wolverine Time. And it just struck me as quite sad that the last groups of students that will know about this are going to graduate. And as, as a senior, I had NEST for about three days before it was taken away. And I understand the reasons it was taken away because coming back from COVID, lunch was free at that time, we couldn't get it out to everybody, and student behavior at the time was not great. But I don't think, first of all, it's not fair that students, five years from the incident or the behavior that we were seeking to punish, are still bearing from what happened generations, you know, before them. And it's also something that scares me because I don't want it to be forgotten. Currently, regardless of whether it is feasible or not, students are asking for these things. And if these students have gone off to college and the last people who remember this are gone, there's nothing to really look at and be like, we used to have that, is this something we can work towards? Because as a board, we always want to hear, what can we do better? And as those things go away, students are going to know less about it and they won't know what to ask anymore. So I believe that's something, when we're looking at what can we improve, how do we keep those students that are doing well have a feeling of what I'm doing has some worth to it, right? Because my school notices it and my school rewards it. And I think that we are doing pretty well with it in a lot of spaces because forgetting good grades at, at North Point, you get this thing called a SOAR card, it used to be a flight card, but it's, you can get like a homework pass or a free ticket to a football game or something. And that, I think, is a good incentive to get good grades. And, yeah, that's what I'm, I'd like to bring up because
Yeah.
Once that's gone, you know, it's, it might never come back. So I just hope that that's something we're keeping in mind as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Great, great point. And, and I, I'll be honest, I think that we did just what, what, what we sometimes complain about and give a lot of attention to the negative, you know, stuff, right? And so now, had we had an opportunity to make a longer presentation and, or the whole night was ours, we probably would have gotten more into some of the positive behaviors and interventions and supports that you're talking about. We certainly still support it. It's a part of our MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, where we do accentuate and we expect and ask our leaders to really accentuate the positive and acknowledge our students for doing the right thing and make sure that they are recognized, making sure that they are recognized because that's important, that will encourage that behavior, right? We just didn't have an opportunity necessarily to talk a lot about that tonight, but I do understand as well, and Dr. Blanchard might be able to speak on it, but I do understand that our efforts to increase our MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, is going to be increasing as well. So in some places, yes, our PBS programs perhaps have died off a little bit, but we are needing to, we recognize we need to circle back and beef some of those things back up as well as, you know, given consequences when they are necessary. But if you have a strong program there, and again, that was that school-wide behavior sort of program I was talking about earlier, if students are following the general rules, you know, then they won't have the, the consequences. But at the same time, can we stand to improve in that area? Yeah, we receive that for sure. And then the other thing, you talked about the, the NEST time, the Cougar Time, the Pride Time, and all of those, those, you know, those have changed some, but there's always, you know, discussions about what they can look like. They don't, at this point, I don't believe any of our schools, any of our schools still have the straight hour lunchtime, but they have activity periods where it's a variation of that. And they may call it, you know, Charger Time still or whatever it is, it may not. I'm not, not, some schools, some do and some don't. But again, the idea there is something that we still support, but we do need to work to, you know, make it work for everyone. There are, there were lots of challenges that came with it. Great idea, but lots of challenges came with it as well. So we continue to work on that. So, so I'm sorry that, you know, you guys don't, the ones graduating are going to be the last ones, at least in your mind, but maybe not. Maybe there'll be a variation, variation of something that we can improve on in that regard. Yes, indeed.
I was just going to say, Dr. Jones, I very much appreciate what our SMOP, Mr. Verk, said. I think you made excellent points, you know, because, you know, we always say our students are our customers. You know, you're the reason why we're doing everything and it's very important to get your input. And I think that focusing on the 81%, you know, that's doing what they're supposed to do, hopefully will encourage other students and that they will aspire to do that. And part of the, the positive rewards outside of PBIS, of course, is being able to participate in sports, extracurriculars, and showing them that there are more motivations and incentives for doing what you're supposed to do than most students do what they're supposed to do. Unfortunately, the negative overtakes the news. And what we did today probably won't get as much press as when we have a negative incident. So I appreciate you saying that and I agree with you. And, you know, I don't know all the reasons why things changed the way that they did, but I think that the students need that middle-of-the-day, whatever that looks like, that mental health break, that escape, because school is very stressful, there are a lot of demands. And that's, I think, a good way for you to learn how to self-regulate. You know, when you just need a break and you just need to step away, I think that will help a lot as well. So I really appreciate you raising those points. I know they do the, do that a lot for the younger students, where they have like the, what was it? Yeah, the, yeah, the brain breaks, exactly. And that, that never stops, you know? Candidly, adults need those too. But thank you so much for always advocating for students, Sam. That was fantastic. Did you want to add something, Dr. Blanchard? Or, or you were finished, Dr. Jones?
Oh, I was. I just, I see Ms. Smith saying.
Sure, one sec. Did you want to add something or you're good, Dr. Blanchard?
I think the only thing to think, it's an excellent point in talking about PBIS. The important piece is the concept in the school building, that it's a positive environment and it's an environment where students want to learn. Our statistics are indicating to us that overall, that seems to be happening. So if students are feeling like they're falling through the cracks, those are the students I do worry about. And what are our indicators that we use to make that determination? Is it grades? Is it behavior? Is it school attendance? And so those are the details that we start looking at when, for example, our student services teams this year are looking at culture and climate goals specifically that they can work on to support their school administration, score at the school building, looking at attendance, looking at peer-to-peer conflicts and how they're managing that. So those are just some of the areas that we're looking at. Even, and PBIS, even though, yes, it may not be as active in some buildings, I think the concept is there across the board.
Thank you. Okay, starting here, Ms. Butler-Washington, you had a point?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, just three questions. First, I was wanting to ask, have we included like workshops and activities that promotes not doing the violations in the school? I know you have like ISSS, instead of them going there, having activities, showing them the negative effect of, of the violation that they're doing, so they can learn something because I'm pretty sure students just don't repeat just to repeat, they repeat because they do not know. Or you learn something new or, or why we shouldn't do it because every household is different, so that's why when we come to school, we want to show them something different. So just exploring that piece.
Yeah, one of the things that we do at the secondary level is a base program, so base modules, we call them. So when students are sent to in-school suspension or in-school retention, ISR, ISI, and so, so the idea is that when they go, that they would be assigned a, a lesson on, you know, on, on their computer that speaks to the particular violation that they committed in order to get them there. So the idea is to go through the module and then get to the point where they're able to take the quizzes or whatever it is at the end. So, so they are hopefully learning something while they're there, not just to punish and away from their peers, but also that they're learning something that they should be doing differently and based specifically on the particular violation that they, that they committed, something that, that is in all of our middle schools, high schools too. Yes, and so, so, so that's just one of the things that, that we try to ensure that students are actually learning something when they're not suspended out of school, that they're having an opportunity to learn from whatever the, the, the behavior was, they're on the spot, very specific to the, to the issue. So.
And then on Slide 13, your weapon slide, just wanted to know, and it's pretty much for the public to make sure that they understand that we are, you know, thinking outside the box and their students is very important to us, we want to make sure of safety. Consulting with other districts like New York, Detroit, Baltimore, about guns and drugs in the school, just to make sure what kind of plan that they, they had so, you know, we can, you know, make it to Charles County and making sure that, you know, we get a handle on this also.
So, so Mr. Stotter is really good, the Director of School Safety and Security is really good about researching what's going on in other areas that are similar to our, have similar demographics to us and getting the latest and greatest of, you know, things that people are trying in other places that seem to be working. He's good about researching and bringing some of those things back to us. But certainly, you know, it's something that we can, you know, it'll be a part of our continued conversations that maybe we look outside the scope of the places that he typically looks to see if there are some, you know, things that are working in other districts outside of the state. A lot of times, he looks at areas, you know, places in, in our general area, Virginia, Maryland, Delaware, Pennsylvania, right in this area. Certainly, we can mention that this may be an area for him to expand some of his, some of his research to, to maybe give us some ideas that, to help in a smaller area that's going on, you know, from what's going on in a bigger place to. We'll put it on his radar. Dr. Navarro is going to add to that, it looks like.
And I just wanted to add, Ms. Butler-Washington, because it's a good question and it's my, you opened the doors for me to make a promo to our community. So, you know, given the incidents, the two incidents with loaded guns that we had in the past several weeks, the board has called, has changed its upcoming town hall to focus on school safety. This is a presentation that talks about everything, violations, is anything from a dress code violation to like all the way up to the, you know, very seldom but occurred weapons situations. At the board's town hall, which is next Tuesday, the 6th, I believe, right? And it is a virtual town hall at 7:00 PM. Thank you. I want to invite all of our communities to come because the focus of our presentation there is a detailed plan on the enhancements that we will do to the work that you hear about today, which is a lot about curricular work, behavioral, mental health work, the training of our staff, and what is the next layers based on what we had happened in our schools and what we've thought about that need to be enhanced. And so I do want to say that part of our role is to be strategic and be reflective and let, and learn from incidents so that we can prevent and do better the next time. So at that meeting, I do urge all of our families and our students, because last time I emailed students as well, and thank you for reading the emails, because I, I've been seeing a lot of students when I've gone out this weekend, that said, I can't believe you emailed us. And I said, well, this is an everybody issue. School safety is an issue with all of us. Today, you get to hear around how we, the educators, are working around behavioral, mental health supports, educating students, supporting, liaising with community to do this work. You'll hear a lot more of the next layer of supports that we are going to be doing to enhance. This is, to me, additional, additional layered approach and not a one-time and done thing. So I just want to put out a promo because you opened the door for me to be able to just invite our community to please log in. And I think the board correctly so decided to do it virtually so that people can be in flexible spaces at a time. I know we have very busy families and they can be in a flexible space doing a couple of things, but still be listening and engaging with us through that session. So thank you.
If I could add also that I would very much like our SMOP to play a key role in that because the students want to hear from the other students. So if you want to maybe invite some of your council members, so we could talk offline. Thank you. Ms. Butler-Washington, you have another question?
Just one more question. And this is actually for Dr. Navarro. She opened the door. Wanted to know your thoughts on a PAO. And PAO, a Public Affairs Officer, which that person, in some of the schools I've seen where things like, you know, big topic things happen that involves definitely the community, what they do is just have this person come out, speak about it, speak about your plan, calm the community down, and they are the person, you know, will be out there in front. So they will be speaking your language, speaking to the community. I know we have an Office of Communication, but if, when I looked at, when Fairfax came out and it was another other county came out, they had a spokesperson. And I looked it up on their website and see what they had because I thought it was part of their school, but actually, this is a person that they hired to do this. And to me, it takes the brunt off of people asking, 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 because you have this person who's trained to be able to speak what you want to convey to the community. And also, they have the training to where they calm everything down so people won't be thinking, you know, it's nothing been said, so nothing is done. So they will know something is done and you can continue on doing the work without the pressure from the community for coming and coming and coming. So just your thoughts on, it's nothing that I'm saying that we have to do, just a thought on it.
So I think, so a couple of things. I'll take the Billingsley incident that we just had as, you know, when these incidents happen, we huddle, we make decisions within a very fast timeline. And I would say that preparing people to do the work of what happens when an incident happens, there's a lot of logistics, is, is 90% of the work of getting everybody to understand who's making decisions, who's talking to who. For the Billingsley incident, you know, one of the things that once, once we were able to go in and make sure that we safely delivered all students to home, we began and continued the, the investigation that the school had started, the police had done their investigation, and we continued to just put together a piece by piece of what's happening so we understand exactly what happened. But the non-negotiable there, and you know, this is, you know, we can absolutely think about who else is needed within the school system in these times, but I am always going to be in front of the issues. And so a non-negotiable for me as the superintendent is I am going to be in front of the community anytime there's an issue of the community. And so a non-negotiable for me was, we are having a community meeting with the Billingsley community because the community, the staff, who I saw on that day, and the families and everything, need to have a, a space to be together, to get as much information as we can give them at that time and point, and to be able to answer their questions. And many times, you know, being in education means sometimes also sort of taking that energy and that heat of what's happening. So there is a strategy that we use when incidents happen, and they happen for a variety of reasons across our schools. There's a team support, I am not alone, there's a team that's, that thinks through what needs to happen and, and all of those pieces. We can definitely entertain any additional supports to the school system, but what I would say is, I am going to get in front of the community and I think it's smart that the board also is getting in front and saying, let's talk in public about what these issues are. And I do not want to bring a plan. I said to the Billingsley community, we're not here to give you sort of a rundown of, now we're going to do these five things that are not going to be long-term solutions. They're going to feel like something happened, but they're no, they're not long-term solutions. I think if you ask anybody who attended the Billingsley community meeting, one of the striking things, I think, for families was, you know, I got a lot, I get a lot of emails and I got a lot of vendors. I just want to remind everybody, I get a lot of vendors that email myself and Mr. Stotter and everybody around how they can sell you the solution to school safety. And if there was a solution to school safety, we would have all bought it by now. And so there's layers of it. And, and yes, communication's an important piece. We learned a couple of things around communications. I think to the Billingsley community, we dissected their specific consequences, but they're different. They're different than the Westlake situation. So we have to take every single situation independently and we have to treat it as such. And yes, we could always use additional support, there's always a prioritization. What I bring forward to the board next week will be a additional layering of plans, and I will make sure to include, what is it that we're doing? Because we actually are not even going into the surface of all the things that schools are actually doing with students. with students, speakers, who's coming in, who's talking to kids about what topics. But we will also talk about what are the things that I will be doing, uh, we will be doing moving forward. And then other things that we're watching and monitoring, um, but, but smart investments in the school system. And I think that's, that's important. So we'll be looking at everything and I'm open to any, any suggestions, um, from anybody in the community of what they would like to see. And then we will make, um, informed decisions within the, the budget restrictions that we have.
And then, thank you.
The, um, last one, it's tacked on to this one. It's the, um, the clear bookbag. That's one I keep getting a lot of emails on, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll address it more next week as well. But, um, I think actually we, if we had a, um, I think Ms. Kramer was there too, and she can probably speak to that, uh, because I think Mr. Stoddard did a nice demonstration, uh, about that. So if you want to speak to that as well.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I did attend the, the Billingsley meeting, um, community meeting. And, um, I thought that Dr. Navarro and, um, Mr. Stoddard, Dr. Jones was there. Dr. Blanchard was there, was a number of staff that answered questions and gave some information. But, um, I think Mr. Stoddard is going to go over some more of, I think a big portion of his presentation is going to be used at the town hall now, uh, because a lot of the information he shared with the Billingsley community, I think, was important to the community at large, to talk about in terms of like safety and some of the measures that he's looking at. Um, he addressed, um, metal detectors, what it would cost, because we know we've heard a lot about that. Um, he did do a very interesting demonstration of a clear backpack. And what it showed ultimately was when things are inside the backpack, it no longer becomes, it's no longer clear anymore. So if there's papers and things in there, it's still, you know, still can, can conceal things. And he had a backpack that he had, not real, just reiterating, because he said they're not real guns, but he placed two, like, I guess toy guns or whatever he had, I don't know, because we couldn't see him, um, in the backpack with like some papers and whatever, stuffed animals. Yeah, he had his daughter's items, um, and you couldn't see inside of it. And so he just did that, I think, to demonstrate that, again, to Dr. Navarro's point, if there was an easy solution, we'd all do it. Everybody would do it across the, the, the country, across the world. Everybody would say, "Oh, if that's the solution, whatever it costs, let's do it." But just the reality is there is no, like, just one solution to it. But, um, I thought it was very interesting, because he's right. I mean, everybody thinks, "Oh, well, it's clear. If you have one item in there, if they only had a gun, sure, you would be able to see it, right?" But, um, and then metal detectors, there was an astronomical cost for it. And then he talked about all the ways that, um, you know, that's not always 100%, right? Because nothing is 100%. So it was very interesting, um, demonstration. But like I said, stay tuned, because I think the town hall, he's going to talk a lot about some of those things. And I think it'll be really good for the entire board to see.
Yeah, and I want to add to, um, to your appointments, Butler-Washington, and to support, um, what Ms. Kramer said. Uh, Ms. Kramer and I presented with Mr. Stoddard and NSBA specifically on this very subject around school safety. And so all of these things were addressed. And he talked, as she said, not just about the clear backpacks, because no one's going to bring a clear backpack with just that one item. They're going to conceal it. So then you can't tell just by looking what's in there. And the metal detectors, why, and a lot of these things sound good in theory. It's more to comfort people and candidly to spend money with the vendors, than to really offer the type of protection we're looking for. Because not all guns are made of metal. And so in my own research, I've learned, Glocks are plastic and then they have ghost guns. So that, and then never mind the, the time that it would take to get everybody through. And as he's mentioned before, students unfortunately will leave doors propped open. So now you can bypass it entirely. So I want everyone to be assured that this is not a case where we're just sitting back hoping that things get better. You know, you, you don't see as the, the rapid work and the frequent work that's done behind the scenes. And all of these things that people are suggesting are absolutely being considered, but they have to make sense in terms of will they actually provide the benefit? Because otherwise we're just spending taxpayer money and not seeing a return. So, but they, great points, and we definitely will, will address that further at the, um, the town hall next week. To our millions, thank you. I believe we had someone, was it Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith, yes, and Ms. Samisha, I don't know who was on our system. Ms. Smith and then Ms. Thomas.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Uh, while I work to bring the microphone closer, uh, hopefully you all can hear me.
It's a little low. You can't hear her? They, they can't hear you?
I can speak into the mic, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Uh, so I have four questions, but quickly before I raise my questions to Dr. Blanchard and Dr. Jones, just wanting to note about the metal detectors, and I've raised this before, as I believe probably the only panelist, or the only board member on the panel, who has actually attended a high school that had a $1 million security system that included metal detectors and bookbag scanners. I can tell you the mental strain that that places on students every single day to go through doors and have to enter into a school building that way. So I would caution my board members, as well as the public, as well as parents, to truly think about what the strain that we would place on students if we were to go that route. Absolutely, do we want to protect students? Of course, certainly, we absolutely do. But I just wanted to add that note. So I actually have four questions. Uh, Dr. Jones, I'll start with you first. Uh, on slide 15, it was noted the changes, what was it? It was the percentage of violations by school level. As we're seeing some slight decreases at the middle and high school level, I'm curious if you have any general assumptions for some of the increases we're seeing at the elementary school level?
Um, general assumptions.
General speculation.
Our, our, our youngest learners, um, are, are, are more challenging than, uh, perhaps they, they, they have been. Um, there has been some talk of some of those children having been, um, a result of the time period out of, out of school beyond COVID, um, a little bit older than that. The older, the fourth and fifth graders, those students. But the little ones, um, are, are, are having some real challenges that we are grappling with. Um, I would, again, I don't have those numbers in front of me to say for sure, uh, but just in the conversations that I've had with principals, I've had with the executive directors, um, and, and, you know, what I know is going on, I would suspect that some of those elevated numbers were, um, our little guys. Um, and so, so we are, which is a little unique for us, um, here in recent years. And so, so that's, that top, best guess right now, not, not having those specific numbers in front of me, uh, I would say.
I appreciate that. Um, if there's a way that, if we could figure out kind of what's the trend there, just to ensure that next school year, we don't see a continued sort of upward trajectory of that number.
Sure.
If there's something specific that's happening at the elementary school level that we need to find a way of getting control over with the remainder of the time that we have for this school year and perhaps early next, would welcome better understanding what's happening at the elementary school level. Again, again, slight increases, but want to ensure that we're not going to see some sort of exponential jump in the next school year. Um, Dr. Jones, my last question for you before I go on to Dr. Blanchard is on slide 26. It's noted kind of the various, uh, things or supports that are offered to students that we sort of have in the school system. And I'm curious, for those who end up suspended because of weapons violations of any kind or things that happen, what, that end up sort of suspending them or kind of removing them from the building, I'm curious if these same supports are also included as supports that are offered to those students and their families as well?
So, so the students who bring the weapon, are there supports that are provided to them, perhaps upon their return to school? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, so that, that, that's really important for us, that students are also getting, uh, support as well as the discipline. Um, they kind of go hand in hand. Um, you have to, the only way you can kind of learn from it is to get the right kinds of supports. And so we will often, um, recommend to principals that they set these children up with counselors, with a mentor, with whomever it may be. Sometimes that starts at the disposition conference with the family. Um, the, the, the plans for success upon return is what we call them. So, so we, we absolutely believe that that piece is important, so we don't want to leave that out. Um, whenever the students are, are, and depending on what it is, but, you know, some things are, are bigger than others, some things are more frequent than others. And so for the things that are more intense, then we obviously want to have more, um, I guess, intense kind of plans for them, uh, when they return in order to help sort of deter some of that moving forward.
Can I just add a couple of examples? So I just want to be very.
I just want to be very concrete. So sometimes we refer, uh, kids for teen court.
Yes.
Um, the situations that we were dealing with, um, we have had extensive meetings with several of Dr. Blanchard's staff on mental health, behavioral health for the student, the students involved. Uh, sometimes we look at educational placements that are better suited for them, because we have to provide, uh, extensive mental health. Um, sometimes we ask that if they are getting private providers, that, uh, we encourage the families to have that medical person, uh, work with our counselors directly. Um, and then, you know, sometimes we also, um, refer families out to counseling in outside agencies outside of the school system. And I would say Ms. Youngwadi, um, Charmaine Youngwadi, usually her rulings, um, when there is a suspension to the superintendent, I feel like have disciplinary consequences and then have a laundry list of things that you have to do. Uh, meaning supports that we're going to give you, community service that she requires young people to do to sort of restore kind of their, um, whatever they did. Um, and so maybe what we can do is, um, provide, because I think we, we talk at a high level and I look at the, you know, her disposition many times has more things that she's making young people, their families participate in than just you're out 45 days, you're out 36 days. There's a whole bunch of, of things that she has them participate in, um, uh.
Or research and write about.
Research, write about, communicate with the person that you did some. She has a lot of restorative practices that she makes young people go through. And it might be helpful to provide an example or two, obviously names taken off, of the kinds of disposition that she does, because it's not just a simple processing of kids. You're out for 45 days. Um, and then I also just want to say, at STEADAM, I want to give STEADAM a lot of kudos because, um, there are numbers in students who want to stay in that setting because of all the support they receive and the work that they've been doing this year and in previous years of the warm handoffs back to the regular school setting. Plus, we're going to follow you for, I think it's a month, Cory Dobbins was here earlier, month or two months to make sure you're doing okay. They don't release their case management of the student when the student transitions back to the comprehensive high school. And we learned that, um, over time, saying we need at least a month or two to transition to make sure you are able to be successful in that, in that school environment when you go back in. So, um, lots of different things and, and it'll probably help the board see some examples from Charmaine so that you guys can see concretely what it all goes into when we make those decisions.
And Dr. Navarro, I would, I would ask that perhaps during the, uh, town hall, if we can weave some of those points in?
Yes.
Just to ensure the public is also aware and parents are also aware of, um, what those supports perhaps look like.
And if I could piggyback on that, um, Ms. Smith, Ms. Youngwadi and I have been in contact. And if you recall, a few months ago, the board had approved, um, the initial, uh, beginning stages of having a peer court. And so that's what she and I have been working on. We're going to be visiting teen court. And the important distinction again is that the teen court is run by the sheriff's office. They're already in the system, so to speak. Peer court would be a step before that. And it can also be a lot younger students. So it would be starting at third grade and it would be something that's run by the school system. And this would be encouraging the peer-to-peer, um, recommendations on discipline, the peer-to-peer consequences, if you will. And then more importantly, the restorative practices that they would practice and then encourage other peers to practice. Because that's a lot of who they're obviously influenced by is the other. So it, you know, to Dr. Navarro's point, or was it Dr. Jones, about the multi-level, um, responses. So I think that's something that we would find, um, to would be very effective. Thank you.
No, I look forward to a future briefing on that. That sounds very exciting. Glad that you're involved in that. Uh, so just two other questions, and we can, um, press forward to, uh, Dr. Blanchard. Uh, Dr. Blanchard, on slide 19, you talked about the signs of suicide. There was an exit ticket that was involved, that I believe helped to refer students who may need some additional supports or services. I was just curious, how often is that run? Is that multiple times throughout the year or is it just one point in time?
It's run in two separate occasions. Uh, it's run in the fall and then also run in the spring. But as, as we said, we are transitioning away from signs of suicide to doing teen mental health first aid, which will be in health classes, health one classes throughout the, uh, the entire school year.
And in those, just to follow up, in those, uh, health classes, will the same offerings of support or catching those students who need support, would that also be a part of that health class?
Yeah, the goal of a teen mental health first aid is there's different modules or different components of that, where at any point, if students are saying, pretending on the topic or having a reaction to that, they're to notify the teacher. And the teacher has a process that they will contact the school counselor or school psychologist and make the necessary referral.
Okay, thank you. Um, my final question, Dr. Blanchard, just to press on to my colleagues. On slide 22, it sort of lists out the variety of, um, is it 22? No, that doesn't look 22. Well, yeah, 22, 22 and 23. It kind of lists out the various positions that we have in the school system, from counselors, psychologists, behavioral supports, clinicians. I just want to ensure that these folks are actually doing the job for which they were hired and not other duties as assigned. So they're not like subbing classes, they're not doing lunch duty or bus duty. Like, these folks are just doing these jobs. Could you confirm that for me?
Yes, they're just doing those jobs. And if they are doing something along the lines of monitoring the hallways or after-school monitoring buses, there's actually a component of that to monitor the students they're working with and to assess how they're arriving in the morning, arriving in the afternoon. And it's also a way for them to connect and say hello to students in the morning and say goodbye at the end of the day. And so there's reasons why they do that. It's not necessarily an assignment. Sometimes it's actually a useful intervention to be able to check in and check out with the students at the beginning of the day, end of the day.
That's super helpful. I've heard from, uh, board members across a variety of different states that sometimes these specialized roles that were meant to best support our students' mental health are actually being, being assigned for test coordinators, for a variety of other jobs that perhaps their states or counties or districts just aren't able to cover. So I want to ensure that these folks who we have hired for a very specific purpose are in fact targeting and doing that specific role and not, again, other duties as assigned.
I feel very confident in saying that, because our principals want these services in their school building and they make sure that they're available for the students. And frankly, our folks are not available enough to do those other things because they're too busy working with students during the day.
Well, thank you. That concludes my question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas?
Are you all able to hear me well? Yes?
I can, but you're not that far from me. Can you hear down there?
I speak a little louder.
A little louder.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, many of my colleagues have raised some points that I have, so I won't belabor those points. But I did want to say, um, I, I was excited to see that we have a slight movement down with the three-plus violations of the students that are, you know, in that direction, which I think is really good. I was just wondering if you have any, um, anecdotal, uh, thoughts about how or why those students seem to be, you know, moving down? Are there some specific interventions that we could possibly benchmark? You know, across, uh, schools or share best practices with other schools? Just to make sure that where we see, uh, for lack of a better word, term, recidivism, where students are continuously kind of being that, you know, antagonist within the school building that we just find ways to support those types of students?
Yeah, I, I think being consistent with, uh, with, with our expectations, with our application of the code of conduct, with, uh, the training that we are providing. I'm thinking, I think all those things contribute. Um, I think having, um, the mentors that we have, the, um, the, 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 um, peer mediators that, that we have. I mean, I think, I think there are a, a number of things that can contribute to why we're seeing some, 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 I guess, um, positive trends very slightly there. Um, but it's just, it's just staying the course. And so, so those things we think are important. We want to always enhance, but we don't want to lose, you know, what we're doing. And so, so, so that's important to find the next, um, intervention that may help some of those that we're not, not reaching just yet. And we're always researching what, you know, how can we improve? How can we get better? Um, even when we're doing better, we're still looking for something that's going to help us go the next step. And so, um, so being consistent is, is the main thing there. Um, and ensuring that everyone knows exactly, you know, with regard to the code of conduct, knows exactly what the expectations are, um, and just how we can, you know, collaborate what we do there and, uh, calibrate what we do there, to be sure we're doing the same thing.
That's very helpful, because I, I just wanted, um, for the sake of the public, help them understand that though we may see these behaviors, they don't go unaddressed or, um, without some comprehensive plan, not just, you know, kind of a carrot in the stick, but a little bit more than that. So I think that's helpful. Um, I was very happy to see that, um, you put on the slide that, um, your request that teachers take their safety first. I think that's very important, um, though we know that there are some teachers that are so passionate about their students and they see things that they want to jump in. But making sure that teachers are safe as well is important. So I was happy to see that, because I, I often think that there are some people that are like, you know, "Teacher, you're there. If harm is coming, just throw yourself right in the way." And we don't, we don't want teachers to think that we don't appreciate what they do and also don't respect that they do have to keep themselves safe or, you know, they have to return home safe to their, their own loved ones.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we always want our, our teachers to intervene when, um, something is. We, we always want our, our teachers to intervene when something is going on, but that doesn't always mean physically getting right into it. Don't just walk by like you don't see it going on. Make some noise about it, get on the walkie-talkie and that sort of thing, but, but their own safety.
I do appreciate us making sure that we're supporting our teachers in that way. I did have one question though. We, we have, and this is really for Dr. Blanchard, we talked about mental health services and we do a lot of trying to have continuous school for students so there's no learning loss over the summer and those type of activities. Where do we have things that are continuing the mental health support? Because as you know, we send students home for the summer and we are not, you know, if they don't have continuity of maybe a mentor or things that they're having, then we see this, for lack of a better term, a deluge, you know, September, August, you know, everybody's like, people, kids, let's just go start ruckus, you know, because they've been at home or, you know, sleeping in, you know, whatever they've been doing over the summer. So I was just wondering if there are some thoughts about ways that we can have some continuity for mental health for the students over the summer so that we don't have, you know, any, we, we, we don't want learning loss, but we also don't want social, emotional things that students have built to be lost over the summer and then we have to kind of, you know, do that again and, and don't get stabilized until it's, you know, you know, October, November, right? We'd like to get those students to just keep on that good track if they're, you know, having a mentor or have a teacher that they connect it with. How do we keep that? So that's my last question. Thank you.
It's a great question that we continue to always look at because we have the same concerns, particularly at the elementary level with that, you know, not only the loss of learning, but the loss of some of the SEL skills and interaction abilities. Some kids are very isolated in their home environment and don't have an opportunity to interact with peers. We've done a number of different things around that we can always certainly improve. A couple of areas are with Hazel Health is now available over all year long. It's available to families during the day and in the evenings so we can maintain that continuity of there's long-term counseling needs for particular students. BASE that is available as long, as well as information and tools for the students at the elementary level that are available online, available for the parents over the summer to be able to utilize, move this world, thank you, I was, I was struggling with the words, move this world and BASE is available over the summer as well to all the families. So many of the tools that we offer are more virtually based. We have limited staff available over the summer just because our, our staff, it's important for them to have that summer recharge, but we do have some 12-month folks that can be available on an emergency basis for individual families. But a lot of the things we're doing right now are virtually based.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'd like to see if we could.
Mr. Lowes, would you like to share that? Mr. Lowes? I was just saying, Mike, you might even want to add that during our boost programs, we have added additional positions for the SEL positions to keep some of that SEL work continuing during the boost programs and our summer school programs as well.
That's, that's great. I, I'd like to see, even if we had something like care packages we send home with kids at the end of the school year, you know, just like, here's all the resources that are virtual, just so parents can, you know, take that with them, kind of pack their parachute for the summer. Where do you want your kid to land, social, emotional? Like here's some places they can go online and do things themselves, just because as we know, parents get a lot of information and maybe it doesn't stand out. But for those students, those particular ones that we know may need that, if we find ways to give that information to them just as the school year is ending, that may help. So then when we see them come back in the fall, that we don't have some, some issues because they have had, you know, kind of a, a time where they've not had some of that support. So that will be something that I think may, may support parents and they may be happy with.
Thank you. We'll certainly get that out to folks who do a lot by email and things along those lines. But I do think some additional things around those lines would be very helpful.
Okay. All right, Ms. Kramer, we'll have you be the final point and then we have two other presentations.
Yes, ma'am. And I will be brief. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to go back real quick to our student members' point because this is something that I do hear a lot about from parents about not doing enough to reinforce positive behaviors. And there seems to be also sort of a focus on like this concept of punishing everyone for the action of, of a few, the actions of a few, like the, the whole Nest situation going away. And I hear it from elementary all the way through high school. You know, even at my own son's school, he's in seventh grade. So they recently, you know, we got this email from the AP saying, we may cancel the field trip coming up, which they don't get many of to begin with anymore, right? That's something that has kind of not really returned to normal post-COVID. And students, you know, need these outlets, these breaks from the normal day, these opportunities to have experiential learning, things of that nature. And so the email said that essentially there was an altercation amongst a few students in seventh grade and so it was being considered to take away the field trip for the entire seventh grade because of, of these few students. And I just think we have to get away from this concept of blanket punishment for everyone, dole out the consequences to those who have earned it, right? Absolutely. And we need to be consistent with our code of student conduct when it comes to that. But if you don't reinforce positive behaviors, if we don't as a school system reinforce positive behaviors and the students begin to think, well, if I follow the rules, but I'm still subject to the same consequences as someone who doesn't follow the rules, then why would I continue to do the right thing? You know, there's no motivation to do that. And so we really have to get away from that, you know? We have to find a way to address the students, you know, that eight percent, nine percent, whatever it is. But we can't punish the 80% you know, for those, those behaviors that we do see because otherwise what I fear is going to happen is some of those 80% are going to head back over, you know, to that 10% or that, you know, 9%. And that's what we don't want to happen. So I just want us to be cautious about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excellent points and I completely agree with that, that, you know, what you continuously reinforce and focus on is what the students are going to most remember. And you definitely don't want them to feel that there's no motivation to do well. So I, I'd support that, that point. I just want to say briefly, and we can of course delve into this more, at the town hall, the role of the Director of School Safety and Security and how this all ties in within the entire system. Just, and I'm really hoping that at the end of the town hall, I know we've done different versions of this, but sometimes you just have to keep reinforcing and reiterating the same information, especially when you've had something as traumatic as a student bringing a gun to school. People naturally panic, they get upset, they get worried. And we just want to reassure people as much as possible that we are doing everything we can. And if for some reason we aren't, we're very open to that, just as Dr. Navarro said. This is not a, we're just going to continue doing what we've been doing regardless of whether or not it works. That's not the message at all. And I also want to just briefly reinforce the need for us to advertise and promote the existing programs. Is there a lot of great things that we do that I don't think the general public is aware of? And a lot of resources for parents that may feel frustrated, that may feel afraid that we already have in place. And Hazel Health, I think, is an excellent example of that. So I think the more that we can, oh, thank you, Mr. Heil. Look, our audience of one, thank you, sir. As many things as we can do to reinforce what we already have, what is working and, but still remaining open to what we can do better. I think that we're always willing to evolve. So thank you both so very much. This was fantastic. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Quick time check, colleagues. It is 7:20. Next up, we have a presentation by Mr. Lowes, our Chief of Teaching and Learning on grades four and five social studies curriculum request. And then followed by the, the PESOTA update, pardon me, with Ms. Angelica Jackson. Mr. Lowes, will Mr. Hopkins be, oh, there he is. Hi, sorry. Mr. Alan Hopkins, our social studies research.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairperson Moore Lee, Vice Chairperson Kramer, board members and Superintendent Dr. Navarro. I'm here tonight with Alan Hopkins. He's our resource teacher for social studies, grades K through eight. And he is our expert within the curriculum within those areas. I believe last year I had a question from the board about when we're going to look at some of the social studies curriculum in our elementary schools. Because you were hearing from some of our schools that we needed, we're going to hear from.
Just tell, it's on, just tilt it up.
Okay. You, we heard from some of our schools that we needed some additional curriculum materials for them to help them with our fourth and fifth grade curriculum. So we have been looking at that and I want to commend Mr. Hopkins. He has really not only brought together a diverse committee to, to bring a recommendation to you tonight, but he's also reached out to many of our stakeholders to get additional information. And I'm going to have him present the material tonight and the findings from that committee. So, Mr. Hopkins?
All right, good, good evening, sorry. And thank you for giving me some of your time this evening. Again, as Mr. Lowes said, my name is Alan Hopkins. I'm the social studies resource teacher. My colleague, Jack Tuttle, and I make up the social studies department at the Starkey Building. I'm here today to talk to you about a resource that we would like to purchase for our grades four and five students in Charles County. First of all, let me tell you a little bit about the fourth and fifth grade curriculum as it exists. It is based on standards that were put out by the, by MSDE in 2020. It is an inquiry-based framework that they have for really now grades K through 11. In fourth and fifth grade in particular, these grades, it's a, a two-part overview of United States history, but more through a Maryland lens. So for example, in fourth grade, they learn about the American Revolution, but they learn about the achievements and contributions of Marylanders to that war effort. In fifth grade, they learn about industrialization post-Civil War and they use Baltimore City as a case study for what industrialization can do for the development of cities. So again, it's, it's very much a United States history course, but with a lot of Maryland information. Currently, we do not have a textbook for this course. The, the curriculum lessons that we provide to teachers have been somewhat cobbled together with, with open source resources, articles from our library media databases and other things that teachers have been able to find and piece together. But one of the issues that we run into is that the demands from MSDE in terms of the rigor of the skills and content that is expected at the elementary level, they're very high. And finding sources that are accessible to our students, but still meet that same level rigor can be a challenge, even with significant modifications. And so we're hoping that by having a, a common textbook or curricular resource, we could really kind of level the playing field for our teachers and students when it comes to elementary social studies, particularly in the upper grades. And also provide them with that, the skills that we know vertically, they're going to be expected to be able to master when they get to middle and high school. So we put together, Mr. Tuttle and I put together a committee of 17 staff members and parents. The committee met a total of five times. The first one was kind of an introduction meeting to go over the process, to introduce everyone to kind of norm set and look at our rubric and scoring tool that we were going to use to evaluate the sources. And then every Wednesday after that, for the next four Wednesdays, we met with a different textbook publisher where they walked us through their program, answered all of our questions and provided just additional information that we might need in order to make an informed decision. We ended up reviewing four different materials. The one that we selected, the committee selected was Impact Social Studies by McGraw-Hill. We also looked at Maryland and American Adventure from Gibb Smith. We looked at My World Social Studies from Savas and History Alive from TCI. And we looked at these four resources through four criteria. One, obviously we want to make a purchase that aligns with our social studies standards, our scope and sequence of what we're expecting our fourth and fifth grade students to learn. We also wanted something that showed that strong connection between reading, writing, speaking and listening and social studies skills as well. So that was something that we prioritized. Along those same lines, we wanted something that took an inquiry-based approach that emphasized those best practices in social studies instruction, that it's not a matter of memorizing important people, dates, battles, those kinds of things. It's more about being able to apply those skills of historian, skills of geographer, skills of a political scientist to your learning. And so we wanted something that had a really strong inquiry-based approach and also some interdisciplinary connections as well. We really wanted to also emphasize the importance of diverse historical perspectives. We have a very diverse county, we have a very diverse student population and teacher population. And it was important that any resource that we put in our schools, in the hands of our teachers and students, students can see themselves in the history that's being presented, that it's not one-sided, that there are, there's room for multiple perspectives of historical events. And lastly, of course, we didn't want to spend money on a purchase if it was not compatible with Canvas and our Clever program, things that we already have in place digitally, as well as have some digital enhancements that will really help our students be more engaged with the material. So looking at something that was a combination of digital and print resources. So the committee, as I said, they selected the Impact Social Studies program from McGraw-Hill. And I won't spend a lot of time, you know, getting into the specific details, but I'll highlight a few things that they felt were really strong aspects of this program. One is that even though this is a national resource, it's, it's a, you know, McGraw-Hill is a huge company, this is a national book, they have done the work of taking our Maryland standards and creating a Maryland-specific version of their impact program. So the teachers are provided with what they call a snap-in guide that is almost like an ancillary piece of their teacher's guide that highlights some very Maryland-specific topics. So in the slide here, for example, one of the things they learn about in fifth grade after their Civil War unit is the impact of historically black colleges and universities. And this article specifically highlights Maryland's HBCUs, which is specifically an objective in that fifth grade framework. So not only is it customized for Maryland, but it does just what we wanted to in terms of, it aligns with the standards, it has multiple connections to ELA, to literacy, to reading, writing, speaking and listening as well. That information, that connection, that correlation is also provided in that teacher's guide. It has a digital component and print components as well. Everything that the students have in print, they can access digitally. That's important because it leads to flexibility. Teachers have different teaching styles, classrooms have different setups, students have different needs. And having the flexibility of a print material, putting it in students' hands, some students need that, some teachers need that, having digital components as well that can enhance student learning is helpful. One of the nice things about the digital components is you have a lot of, of tools. So as students are reading, they can highlight, they can annotate with little post-it notes digitally. It also has a read-aloud feature where students can adjust the, the pace of the read-aloud. And when the teachers set up their rosters, they can actually select the Lexile level per student of the materials on that digital platform. So our students who maybe need additional scaffolds and support in reading, the teacher, you know, can make those adjustments before they even see the resource on their computers. And then the last thing I just wanted to highlight is, we all know that our, our ML population is increasing tremendously. And this resource features incredible supports for multilingual learners, authentic leveled supports. The book is divided into eight chapters. Each chapter is divided into between three to five lessons. And every single lesson in the resource has a two-page guide for teachers for how to support multilingual learners at different levels. It's also available in Spanish, the teacher's edition and student edition, so that when Arthur Middleton's dual-language program reaches fourth grade, and I believe the 28, 29 school year, we'll have a, a Spanish-language resource already in place, hopefully, for those students. And that should be a pretty smooth transition to what they're going to be doing in social studies at Middleton. I wanted to share, I know that's a lot of print on one slide for the next slide, but I wanted to share some feedback from the members of the committee. Again, they really praised the alignment to the Maryland standards, the literacy standards as well. You know, a lot of the committee members are elementary teachers and elementary teachers have to teach in a lot of cases, everything. And so they were really able to see the relevance between what they're doing in these social studies resources and what they're doing with their inter-reading program. There's a lot of connections there, especially in terms of skills. They also praised that multiple perspectives on historical events were present, particularly in the Maryland-specific resources, that there were plenty of tools to assess students' prior knowledge, to gauge their ongoing learning throughout the lessons, as well as promote critical thinking, reflection, and of course, assessment to see, did students get it at the end? They also commented that it's, it's very straightforward, it's user-friendly. Once they got in and played around with it, because we had a digital trial, they were able to make a quick sense of the resources. Not every comment's going to be positive in a review process like this. And so some of the committee members were concerned about. of the committee members were concerned about a couple of things. One is, in the scripted activities that were provided, a couple of the members felt they kind of leaned a little bit more on the traditional side, like, here's a piece of text, answer these questions, and now let's, you know, write a couple of sentences afterwards, or let's make a poster, or, you know, just those very traditional linear lessons. And then also, again, we're talking about elementary teachers reviewing this, and they know the amount of time that they typically have for social studies in terms of planning. They were a little bit worried that because there's such a large volume of resources available through this program, that finding time to fit them all in, or to make sense of everything and make everything flow, might be a challenge, might be a little overwhelming for teachers. To me, those two concerns highlight the importance of the next step. We would never take a textbook, put it in the hands of the teachers, and say, here, have at it, you know, you're on your own. So, the curriculum development that comes along with this resource, the professional development as well, is the next step. So, over the summer, I plan to start putting some unit plans, curriculum guides, model lessons in place for our teachers, so that they can start the year with a good understanding of what resources they have available to them. And like with most companies, McGraw-Hill does put four hours of professional learning with the purchase. So, that's going to be PD from, experts from McGraw-Hill, that we'll utilize with our teachers. As Mr. Lowndes also mentioned, I did preemptively reach out to a few organizations, local organizations, the Charles County NAACP, the Commission for Women, the CCAC organization, as well as Leadership with the Akikic Foundation, and I've begun to receive some feedback. I'll be honest, the feedback's a little mixed, but I'll be able to share more specific feedback with you next month, when I come back and share the entire review with you. With that, again, next steps just being making the book obviously available in a physical location at the Starkey Building, but also digitally through our social media, through our website. There's an online, our Microsoft form, that people can complete to submit their feedback, and I hope to be able to share that feedback with you at the May 19th work session, after also reaching out to, again, the four agencies that I mentioned before, as well as some additional groups, our social studies teachers, et cetera, so that we can have as much comprehensive feedback on this resource as possible. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about fourth and fifth grade social studies or the McGraw-Hill program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hopkins.
You're welcome.
I have currently a third grader and a fifth grader, so this will, these will be my customers that will be impacted. And also, thank you for the specific stakeholder contacts. I appreciate the intentionality, because we, you know, offer the same feedback, so I appreciate that. And also, I personally like the customization, because I think that will provide additional teacher supports, and allow them to tailor it to how students learn. So, that impressed me. As a reminder, colleagues, this is not for action tonight, this is an information item, so... But with that said, any looking this way, comments, questions? Comments or questions, Ms. Smith?
And in the interest of time, I'll be brief. Was never the history buff in school, but loved a good history project. So, I'm always curious about like project-based learning opportunities. I did see the sort of one delta that was offered in terms of customization, but it seems like there is a great deal of customization for teachers, but curious about like field trips, supplemental texts and videos, things that can really help history to come alive, just given that it is a pretty dense and lengthy time period for fourth to fifth graders, and we truly want to ensure that these kids are getting the most, and truly understanding our rich history and evolution in this country, and not something we kind of gloss over as we jump to middle school. So, wanting to get a better sense of what are the opportunities to deepen kids' learning and understanding of the text.
Yeah, excellent question. One thing I didn't highlight that I really particularly liked about the resource was, also at the end of every chapter, they devote an entire section to, what does this mean for us today? Because, you know, sometimes students aren't always history buffs, and they get kind of lost in the minute details, and it's just, it's not relevant to them. But if you can explain to them, and they can see how what happened 100 years ago is really relevant to what we're seeing in our society today, that's really powerful and can be very, very helpful for that retention of information. There are projects and other collaborative tasks that are embedded in the resource. That was another thing that came up, as in terms of positive feedback, was the opportunities for collaboration and critical thinking. In terms of field trips, we have certainly, we live in a great area of the country for opportunities for local history, and I know my colleague, Jack, has highlighted some of the things we've done locally with other organizations. I know the folks at the Akikic Foundation would love to have more Charles County visitors there, for example. They have great programming, and I've kind of steered some individual teachers in that direction, and when they're looking for, like, hey, Mr. Hopkins, do you have any good local field trip ideas? But we have lots of larger and smaller historical locations that, you know, we'd love to keep developing partnerships with and encourage visits there, because that hands-on learning is very, very important and very, very meaningful for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? No? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hopkins.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Lowndes, appreciate it. All right, moving right along, I believe next up is our, yes, our Pisota update, Ms. Angelica Jackson and Ms. Chris Miller. Oh, Mrs. Schwartz isn't going to start, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to give a quick introduction to what you're going to be hearing in the next few minutes. We have two PowerPoint presentations that are being provided to the board. They're both loaded on Board Docs, the first from the superintendent and the second from Pisota. There's also a copy of the current charter agreement with suggested changes and amendments embedded in that document. The hope is that eventually, the board will adopt changes to the charter agreement that are agreed upon by both the superintendent and Pisota. I'm not sure we're quite there yet tonight, but you'll hear presentations from Ms. Miller on behalf of the superintendent and Ms. Jackson on behalf of Pisota, with some of the suggestions they have on how to address the charter agreement. I'm here as well for any questions, as is Ms. Acton, and I'll turn it over first to Ms. Miller.
Well, one quick question, Mr. Schwartz. In terms of the, I'm assuming the charter agreement, you mentioned we may not be there yet, is there a specific timeline, especially in light of the upcoming school year, anything we need to keep in mind?
No, there's no particular timeline. We currently have a five-year charter agreement in place. We're finishing the second year of those five years. If no changes are adopted by the board, that charter agreement continues as written. And that agreement, again, is online. If you look at what's currently posted on Board Docs and ignore the red changes that are suggested changes, that's the document that's currently the charter agreement, and that continues until we make changes.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, good evening.
Okay. I was making fun of everybody before with the microphone.
We can hear you well.
Okay, I have the cafeteria voice, but I think Kyle would not be happy if... I'm Chris Miller. One of the many hats that I wear here in Charles County, you're used to seeing me for the Blueprint Implementation Coordinator, but another hat that I wear is the Charter School Liaison for Charles County Public Schools. So, I'm going to take you through this, I'm not going to go word for word, because you've seen most of this presentation. It was presented to the, most of it was presented to the board in December of 2024. On page two, I just gave you a little bit of background information about Pisota. As Mr. Schwartz was saying previously, they are in their second year. Their first year, the signed charter agreement allowed them to have up to 175 students, and they significantly increased that number in year two, and that's because of completed construction, I must instruct, construction to their second floor, which gave them a lot more space in order to increase those numbers. The first year, you know, that September 30 count, September 30 of 2023, they had 167 students, and we, Dr. Navarro allowed them some flexibility after the first day of school. That's currently what the charter agreement says, that students cannot enroll after the first day, but we gave them some flexibility during the month of September. They came to us later that school year, asking for additional flexibility to have more students increased, to get their numbers up to 175. And that request was denied due to some instructional and some curricular concerns that were taking, that were happening at Pisota. They ended the year with 141 students. So, in '24-'25, their maximum capacity, they had permission from the superintendent to go up to 250 again, because they have much more space than they did the previous year. On the September 30 count, they were up to 243 students, and in October, they asked for some flexibility to increase that enrollment, to get up to the 250 students. And they had permission to enroll nine students to get up to 250, and they enrolled seven students to get up to 248. So, the percentage of farms that they have at their school right now is 43%, and special education students, which is 10.5%, which, where'd Mr. Lowndes go, probably? But that is less, their special ed numbers are lower than the average of our, of the school system, so they do have a lower percentage of special education students. Their current enrollment as of last week is 220 students. So, again, I'm not going to go line for line here. We talked about the, Ms. Morley, you did talk about a timeline. I know that Pisota has expressed interest over the past year to make some amendments to the charter agreement. So, we started that discussion in October of 2024, with the hopes that we would bring you some proposed changes and aligned language between CCPS and Pisota at the November Board Work Session. Pisota, you know, they were working to get some proposed language together, not quite ready for the November Board Work Session. So, as you know, we did come to you in December with what we thought was some shared language that we had agreed upon, and, you know, after, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Jackson, but she made the decision that she wanted it to be an information-only session, and she didn't want the board to act in December on those agreed changes. So, we again came back together after that December board meeting, and I know that Mr. Schwartz and Pisota's attorney that they hired had a discussion in January about some proposed language, and we continually talked about what we agreed upon and what changes we may want to make to the signed charter agreement. So, on April 1st, we had a meeting with the superintendent, the Ms. Jackson, CCPS staff, and a member of the Maryland Alliance of Public Charter Schools, and we went through that board presentation from December, line by line. And again, we did have some shared language. Pisota wanted some time to, again, go through everything, and we asked at, at that meeting that they come back with us on April 11th, with the shared language, to come before you for the board. And at the April 11th meeting, Pisota wasn't ready to come forward with the shared language that we had talked about previously at the April 1st meeting. So, we ended the meeting because there wasn't really anything to talk about, since we didn't have shared language. So, I just want to go through previously, just as a reminder, some of the things that we did agree upon based in December, and some things that we had assumed that we were still on the same page about. You know, talking about, you know, if you look at 5.2, we were, the superintendent has the flexibility to grant Pisota increased enrollment. The current flexibility gave them 240 students, but I know that Pisota had asked for 255, and we were willing to, to grant them that flexibility. 5.6 talks about the transfer process. Currently, in the charter agreement, it says the first day of school, but we wanted to give Pisota that flexibility through the September 30 count. And remember, that day of September 30 is really important to the school system about who's sitting in those seats, because that determines the amount of funding that we get from the state. What's, what the charter agreement does give is the flexibility, though, for Dr. Navarro to grant additional flexibility to Pisota for students to come in at a different time, just like we did for this past school year. We allowed Pisota to, to get students to get up to that 250 in October, and we are looking at, for next year, allowing Pisota, Dr. Navarro, allowing Pisota to get up to their maximum capacity at the semester mark, if they lose students throughout the year. So, we've established a tentative timeline for January 5th through the 16th, which is kind of a two-week window that gives Pisota some time to contact families, to see if they are still interested in coming off of the waitlist, and be able to come in at the quarter three mark. We thought that that would be a good, instead of having students come in in the middle of the marking period, having them come in at the semester mark really gives students a opportunity to come in at a good time, when there's some transition going on. Some additional changes that we thought that we had agreed upon, we were just talking about the enrollment purposes, and we can see there on Slide 6, that we changed that date to September 15th. On Slide 7, we just, you know, Eric added some terms that really are not, doesn't change any language or anything, but as he was looking how things were written, he just wanted to add a few verbs or a few words to that. Looking then on page, Slide 8, we're taking out the IEP facilitator, because in the charter agreement, the Charles County Public Schools is actually the one who provides the special ed services and the IEP facilitator, but we did recognize that Pisota needed to have a student services coordinator. And then, we added some language about when we disperse the funds to Pisota, because this reflects the delay that we've had from Pisota with getting the required paperwork, when it comes to every quarter with their budgets and their spending for their money. The next few slides just kind of talks about how Pisota is being separated by Phoenix International Incorporated, which is the nonprofit. It wasn't very clear in the current charter agreement, so those changes wanted to be made in that way. And then, again, on Slide 10, talking about the same delineation between the nonprofit and the school itself. There were two changes that CCPS wanted to amend, and it was not agreed upon with Pisota, and that has to do with the after-school activities, really looking at who is, it comes down to a liability issue. When there are after-school activities, are they Pisota, the school activities, or are they Phoenix International Incorporated activities? And oftentimes, they're one or the other, but if they are that of the Phoenix International Incorporated, and there are Pisota's, CCPS staff members there, it becomes an issue of liability as to who, who is liable for anything that takes place at that time. So, CCPS wanted that delineation, just to see clarification on what, you know, what are after-school activities and what are nonprofit activities? And then, CCPS determined that if a CCPS staff member is present, even if it is a nonprofit activity, CCPS is still liable for things that take place. And, you know, Pisota, to its credit, you know, wants to be able to have that autonomy to act as a nonprofit within their building. The second change that CCPS wanted to propose, and Pisota was not agreeable to, is talking about when it comes to the deadlines for the student course selection and the master schedule creation. and the master schedule creation. Course selection really should drive your staffing in a building. And over the past two years, Pissoda has had delays in identifying the teachers that they need to hire, because the course selection process has not been done in a timely manner. And so there's been an issue with students who decide to leave Pissoda. Maybe mid, they may decide in April that they don't want to return to Pissoda the next school year. We don't have course selection sheets for them if they're transferring back to their home school. So it becomes a problem for the home school. And it was also a problem for our eighth grade students who were transitioning to ninth grade last school year, who didn't have their course selection sheets completed in a timely manner. And so with this change, we just wanted to ensure that Pissoda would start its third year, next year, with these routines that really should be established in the school by now. It'll help with the administrative workload for the principal at the school and also with the workload at central office. I know that, you know, we provide a great deal of support to them when it comes to scheduling over the past two years, and we just really want them to streamline that process. So that's really all I have for me. Did you want to wait for questions until after Ms. Jackson?
I was going to ask, does anyone have any questions so far? All right, continue on, please.
All right, good evening, everyone. I am Angelica Jackson. I am the co-founder and CEO of Phoenix International Incorporated, Phoenix International School of the Arts. And tonight, I am presenting an update on Phoenix International School of the Arts by the request of the board, when I presented at the, I believe it was the March meeting. And then also sharing about our leanings when it comes to amendments to our current charter agreement. So again, this is what I'll be discussing. I will start with just a general update about where we are this school year, our second year of operation, and, and then moving into the charter agreement revisions. Like Ms. Miller stated, as of last week, we currently have 220 scholars at the school. And you all know why we were able to increase from last year. We were able to expand our school building. We do serve grades six through eight. And you have an understanding of some of the demographics at our school for our student enrollment. I also added some information about our staffing. We are just staffed. We have 10 and 1/2 FTE, or full-time equivalents, for our teaching instructors, and we do have three long-term subs. We have one special education teacher and two IAs. And of course, all of the required supports and operational supports in the, in the school building, such as food services, building operations, our school nurse, and positions like that. And then we do have our principal and our administrative intern. And we continue to be a school that offers a unique opportunity for families in Charles County, being the only arts middle school in the county. And so fortunately, because of that reason, with us filling a gap in the education system here in Charles County, we continue to receive applications to the school. And for next school year, we do have a running waiting list. Sharing a little bit about our impact in the community. Again, we have an arts integrated curriculum. And then we also use an international curriculum, the only school in the county to offer an international curriculum. At one point, we were choosing between IB, so the International Baccalaureate, and Cambridge International. And we settled on Cambridge International because of its ability to, to flex, to meet the ethos of our local community. And then we do implement some of Charles County Public Schools' curriculum for our music program and then social studies and for health. We offer several different performance opportunities for our scholars throughout the year for all of our arts disciplines. So we have drama, dance, visual art, vocal music, instrumental music. And we partner with community organizations in the community to put on these performances. So sometimes it's the College of Southern Maryland. Sometimes it's Alvin Ailey. Sometimes it's other local dance studios and organizations here. To the, in that regard, we have partnered this year with over 15 local community organizations or small businesses. We have, we're, we're part of state and national organizations that support public charter schools. And we bring those resources to Charles County. It's extremely important that we are not just serving our scholars in the building, but the resources that we are able to tap into as a charter school, we bring that to the, the general community as well. And then we have become nationally recognized for the work we're doing in the community through the school from some national organizations that acknowledge public charter schools. It was important that I bring in feedback and insight from our, some of our stakeholder groups. And so on this slide, sharing a little bit about what staff, parents, and scholars, what we call, but our students, how they speak about the school and their glow, right? Of course, we do have some grows, but these are some of our glows, is that we are a family-oriented community. We are a smaller learning community, so that's something that we really can press into, is being more family-oriented. Of course, our engagement in the arts is something that is highlighted by both our parents and our scholars. Opportunities for our scholars to feel like they have agency in what, in the decisions that happen at the school level. And then for our staff, the collaborative environment. We are small, we have small staff, so we all work together to work through and for our mission through Pissoda. And then some of the glows, the, excuse me, the grows that we've received from our stakeholders. And I put in some quotes, because we have done feedback surveys from all of our stakeholder groups throughout the year. And so staffing challenges with us being just staffed back in February, a lot of our staff had the flu, and that was something that happened across the district. And it put a huge strain on our school community. And so, you know, this comment here that we need two or three more bodies in the building is something that our, our staff recommended in their feedback survey. Some additional supports in terms of instructional assistance and things like that. And resource allocation, just understanding how funding is allocated within the building and what we receive as our allotment. Those are some systemic challenges that were raised by, through our feedback forms from some of our stakeholders. Moving on to the charter agreement revisions, so Ms. Miller spoke to this process that we've been going through to get revisions for our charter agreement. What we realized is, we submitted our application to the Charles County Board of Education to open this school back in December 2020. It's been a journey. We were approved April 2021. And we were presented a template charter agreement by Mr. Schwartz at the time that I was able to take to the attorney that we were working with to, you know, suggest amendments and things like that. And then we agreed on this charter agreement. At that time, I was extremely nervous about being able to ensure that our school would open for the community. And I will say, I was very flexible in the way that I negotiated that charter agreement. And, you know, signed, signed on the dotted line to get our school open, because we knew it was something that the community was asking for. Then we opened the school, and this charter agreement that is meant to provide all of the operational terms for our school really regulates how we run our school. And we realized that how the charter agreement is currently written and structured does not work for our school. There were several statutes in our charter agreement that seemed to work against who we are trying to be and what our application that's approved in that charter agreement is purposed to do for our community. And so I certainly have been taking my time with developing this new, our revisions for the charter agreement, because I don't want to keep coming before you all with revisions and amendments and all of those things. And so I'll share about how I'm thinking we will restructure the charter agreement. I believe that it needs to be completely restructured and actually should be separated into three separate documents. The charter agreement should be just the terms of ensuring that the school can open. So that, yes, this school is open from this initial charter agreement five years, from 2023 to 2028. And that it speaks to just those basic terms. You'll be located in this building, so on and so forth. And then we would have a services contract that we could renew annually. And that services contract will speak to things like transportation, any buyback, what, what charter sector calls buyback services. So transportation, food services. It can even be building services, those type of services that we, as a charter school, have the autonomy to outsource to another vendor or to another provider, and that's in a separate agreement. Right now, it's built into our charter agreement. And then we have administrative procedures. So thinking through what Ms. Miller was talking about when it comes to when we do our worst, our course selection in, in that process, or right now in our charter agreement, it states that we have to submit a draft budget for the upcoming school year, the December prior. So perhaps that administrative procedure would not be in the charter agreement. It would be in an administrative procedures document. So separating out all, some of that language that should not actually live in a charter agreement and putting it into those three separate agreements. And just, I will say, consulting other operators across the state, this is what you see for how they structure their charters. It's in these three separate documents. Transportation flexibility, so right now, as the charter agreement is written, it states that we have to provide transportation, and then the transportation has to be provided by Charles County Public Schools. I've brought to you before that the cost of transportation has been prohibitive for us. It is a, it's a, I believe, a savings that we can offer and ensure that those, that funding is going to our program, our academic program. And it is, the way that our transportation is currently structured with the shuttle is prohibitive for some of our families. And then again, speaking to the optional services, such as transportation, we do know that there was a case ruling that happened back in December in Frederick County that speaks to charter schools not having to be forced to buyback services from the school district. And then the enrollment count also addressed in the way, in the current charter agreement, ensuring that we are equitable in the way that we have enrollment. So if a spot becomes available at the school, we're able to offer that spot to a family on our waiting list. The way that our agreement is currently written, it has some bottlenecks in the process where we have to bring the request to the superintendent for a family to enroll or to, to request to enroll throughout the school year. When, the way that I interpret the law is that if a spot is available, then as a school of choice, we're able to offer that to a family on the waiting list. And so I did just add into the presentation some legal base, legal bases for the revisions that I am proposing to you all. And so you can see that here, again, referencing the case ruling that occurred in December. And you can look at that. Some of this is on the MSDE website. You can also look at the Maryland Charter School Law Title IX in Comer. Sharing about financial sustainability as part of the general update for the school. I know that this is crucial. Schools, many charter schools shut down because of financial instability. And I want to make sure that that is not what happens with us. And it's something that certainly takes a collaborative effort to ensure that we are financially sustainable. Working with Ms. Acton has always been a pleasure. She is definitely very collaborative. And we are very open and transparent about how we work through the funding. Again, I propose that the transportation cost gets reduced to zero. It is just, it's very high, and we are paying the most in the state of Maryland for charter schools for transportation. Our construction loan payments, this is something that has come up with, in conversations with Dr. Navarro, just ensuring that we're able to maintain our payments, especially as they, the payments bubble when we get closer toward the end of our charter agreement. And I can confidently say that, that we work with a back office company called EdOps. They provide financial support services to charter schools, nonprofit organizations of all sizes across the country. And I have worked with them to model out our budget to ensure that we are able to meet that construction loan payments once they bubble. Specialized arts programming, so as an art school, you all are familiar with this, with McDonough opening, there are certain spaces that are needed and very specific materials and resources that are needed for an art school. We are a dual-curricular school. So we have our academic, comprehensive academic program, and we have a comprehensive arts pathway program. And so as we look to enhance our program and ensure we're meeting the needs of our curricular program and of our scholars and families, we want to make sure that any savings that we receive can go to if we need to build out a performance space, because we don't currently have that in our building. If we need to make sure that our scholars have their dance uniforms and different things that are needed for those specialized programs, we're able to provide that, so, so that we are implementing that arts program with fidelity. And then also, are any savings that we receive financially would go to our teacher allotments. We recognize that we need to, we need more adults in the building, simply put. And so we're looking at, we're thinking about this creatively. I spoke to Dr. Navarro about a dedicated sub program so that we know we have subs coming in for those days where coverage is needed. Or even if it's a teacher needs to step out for an IEP meeting or a 504 meeting, do we have bodies to cover that classroom? Like, that's what we're thinking about. We're looking at additional admin IAs and just additional support people in the building. And then one challenge that has been, that's different than what I hear from my peers across the state around the quarterly allotments. Many of the school districts across the state will honor your enrollment count date, the enrollment that you have on that enrollment count date. So it's usually around September 30th. So for example, if you have 10 students at that enrollment count date and you get a dollar per student, then that means that for the year, you have $10. It's very basic, I have to do basic math while I'm up here. That means you have $10. And then they would then divide that $10 across the rest of the school year for each quarter, and that's how much you would receive. However, the way that we are currently receiving it is that that number fluctuates based on the previous quarter's enrollment. So we, it's, it's hard for us to do our projections. And we try to be as conservative with our projections and as accurate as possible. But when we don't know how many students may transfer in a quarter or, you know, you know, move and have to withdraw from the school district altogether, because we are in a high military area, it's hard for us to then have as accurate as possible projections for our next quarterly allotment, so that we can do our budgeting for that next quarter or until this, end of the school year is how we, how we do our budget projections. And so I would recommend that we would honor that enrollment count date when it comes to our annual per pupil allotment and its quarterly dispersments, so that we are not having this sort of jagged edge quarterly dispersment based on the previous, the, the previous quarter's enrollment. And again, this is honoring that count date occurs throughout the state. So we are the difference when it comes to, we're the exception when it comes to that. So next steps, I respectfully request that the board approval, that we will move forward with bringing the, my board revision, my, excuse me, my charter revisions to the board that you all would consider an approval. But more importantly, I hope to have board members in the conversations that I'm having with the CCPS staff around finalizing the charter agreement revisions. I would like you all's input. You all have expertise in many different industries and sectors that I think is important for this conversation. And so that you can understand how these meetings are going, what we're talking about, what considerations we have. It's important with you, it's important for you to be part of that conversation, because ultimately, CCBOE is the authorizer. And so I do request that you all join the conversations that we have as we negotiate these changes. And it's my goal that any new implementation, or, excuse me, any new revisions to the board And it's my goal that any new implementation, or excuse me, any new revisions to the board, to the charter will be approved in time for the 2025-2026 school year. And of course, we remain committed to our mission of inspiring and preparing the next generation of global artists, innovators, leaders, and scholars in Charles County. So thank you for your continuous support, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Okay, Vice Chair Kramer, yours is on the hand I see right now. I can't, oh, we have a few more down there. Okay. All right. I'll start if that's okay. Ms. Thomas, Samisha Thomas, did you have your hand raised? Yes, okay.
Okay, were you making it work? Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Jackson. It was certainly good to see kind of some of your thought processes behind the, some of the changes that you're expecting. You talked about the buyback services and wanting autonomy to do outsourcing of the buyback services. What's your expectation there? Are you expecting that you'd be able to find a lower cost for some of the services? And my question really is stemmed around typically with a large school district, there's some economies of scale. So that therefore, maybe you would, you might realize something cheaper. But I was just curious if maybe you'd done some research that would then tell you that perhaps you could find some of those services less expensive. So I'm just curious as to, you know, if you've benchmarked or researched, and is that what you're seeking? Because I, I'm typically used to an economy of scale model where the more you're purchasing, the cheaper things are. So I would be curious to see the delta between what you've researched and what you're seeking with that.
Absolutely. Thank you for your question. So it is for the flexibility so that if we do need to get creative with our funding, we have the opportunity to do so. Right now, as our charter agreement is written, we, we don't. So if we do, for instance, need to hire another staff member, or we need to make sure that we can buy textbooks for our scholars, teacher resources and things like that, we're able to have some funding to be able to do that. And right now, a lot of our funding is wrapped up in those buyback services, transportation being the number one service. And in our future, we would like to consider being able to purchase our own buses or develop our own shuttle system, things like that. But right now, we have, we can't even consider that as an option because our charter agreement does not allow us to do that. So it provides us the flexibility to meet the needs of our scholars and our teachers and our families in real time because we have the funding available and the way, and that's what charter schools, our purpose to do. It's meant to be sort of that engine of equity to be able to move a little bit quicker than traditional public school system, which we know has, you know, a lot of processes and that you have to go through. For a good reason, but the charter school is meant to have that autonomy. And so the way that it's currently written does not allow us to do so.
And then would you expect if, I guess you go out to the market, fair marketplace and you find that you aren't able to get that for cheaper costs, and you, you then just still be able to select the buyback services, but just on a, for lack of a term, an entree basis, right? When you need whatever you want, you know, à la carte, if you will, instead of just having to purchase it all together, is that kind of your thought?
Yes, but it would be through an agreement process. So it wouldn't be like in the middle of the year, I'm doing away with transportation. It wouldn't be that way. So the way that I foresee it and what I'm proposing is that we do have a services agreement. So just like we would work with any other service provider, you have that agreement that has a term. It's timed, that agreement is timed, so usually it's about a year, and then you renew it annually. But there will be a process to request service, services through the school district or to deny services through the school district. So it wouldn't be, you know, in the middle of the year, just trying to cancel a contract or something like that.
Okay. And then my, my last question is you, you mentioned EdOps that you've worked with in order to kind of model your budget so that you feel confident that you guys are. Is that information you shared with, with, I guess, Ms. Acton as she's providing support?
Yes, the CCPS team is aware. We've been working with EdOps since before the school opened, so when we initially submitted our charter application.
So that's why you have that love of confidence, because they've been on your journey then?
Yes.
Okay. At the, at the risk of not taking up much more time for my colleagues, those are two questions I have right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith? Oh, Ms. Warren, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Yes, Ms. Warren.
Yeah, just thank you for the presentation. I just have one question on slide, what is this, 10? Where you broke down the four categories. I feel like that was pretty straightforward. I guess my question is to Dr. Navarro, because you said this is happening all over the state, correct? Like this is how it's broken down for schools in the state? Can we do this, or are we doing this? And if we're not, obviously we're not, why can't we do this?
So, there's a couple of pieces here that I think is important to unpack. Whoops. Yep, these chairs don't quite capture my full weight. The, so this idea of separating the agreement is, is something that can happen. The board, the contract, I mean, we call it a charter, but it technically is a contract with the board. And I believe Ms. Jackson's 100% correct. Nobody that starts a charter school knows what it's like to start a charter school before they start a charter school, unless they've done it before. So I think Ms. Jackson signed a contract with the Board of Education, and she is learning, and we are learning, what it means to run that school in a way that there'll be flexibilities needed through the charter. And so I think the structural changes of what is the contract, and then what are some of these individual sort of year-to-year things that need to be thought of every year, is something that the board can absolutely have the superintendent and her team entertain as we negotiate on your behalf. But let me give you an example. So it sounds good on paper, the devil's in the details. We have, for technology, let's not even talk about transportation yet, for technology, there needs to be some level of compatibility with the system that we have, because the school is part of our system. So the software, the technology components would have to, would have to have that compatibility. And they would also have to be maintained and serviced through some of the ones that we have. We actually, we, we police our own schools all the time. You'd be surprised how often people want to sneak in technology or textbooks that are different from some of those pieces. And so the question is really detailing, what's the flexibility? So this idea of flexibility, I would say I have no closures to. I used to work in a charter school. My first principalship was in a charter school. I think what, what we need is a plan. So transportation, if there is any interest from the board around transportation, and I think when this contract was signed prior to me arriving and the previous board, there was a concern that when the charter, when the charter was, was signed, there was an interest that transportation was provided to students so that there weren't any barriers to whoever wanted to go to Pissoda from anywhere in the school system. If there's an interest to look at flexibility on that, what I would say on behalf of acting as your negotiator is that we see a full flushed out option of what that looks like. And then I think it brings the opportunity for the board to sort of make a decision, how comfortable do you feel on accessibility to this school as part of your options of schools in the school system? And, and I think there is, there is, I hope Ms. Jackson would, would agree with me that there is not an opposition from my lens on this. It's just they give me a meat and potatoes of what you mean by that so that we can bring it forward, because the decision maker is actually not the superintendent. In that case, it is the board. But you can't act on something that doesn't have any details to it, because you need to figure out, does it have a, does it have any consequences for certain communities, right? Are there certain communities that will not have somebody that can drive their kids to school? What is her, what are the numbers of kids right now that don't ride the buses? And Ms. Jackson mentioned maybe somewhere in a meeting that we had before, maybe around 50%, maybe not take the, the current transportation opportunities. So transportation is, is a good subject to talk through, but I think the specifics need to come forward. And, and the devil's in the details. I'll say about number four, I 100% agree with Ms. Jackson about the enrollment importance for Pissoda. And the board, the board's contract right now allows the superintendent the flexibility to figure out what's the best, what's the flexibilities that we can have around enrollment. And I think, Chris, Ms. Miller said that one of the things I discussed with Ms. Jackson at one of our previous meetings was the idea of sort of, if you, if, you know, kids are going to move, and kids move out of Charles County Public Schools all the time too. So it's not like Pissoda's experiencing anything that other schools don't, don't experience. We have movement all the way around. The issue is that when you run a charter school, you're running a small business and you are getting paid or not paid every so often. So for me, an important thing is being able to provide Pissoda sort of a, when your, your car runs out of gas, you go and fill it back up. And the question is, what's a good fill-in time? So you heard today from Ms., from Ms. Miller that the superintendent's proposal is to fill it up mid-year semester. Because a lot of people say, I want to try something different, and you've, the school has lost some students, and so do you fill the tank back up mid-year? And you heard from Ms. Jackson saying, what we would like is the tank to read at a certain amount, and I'm sorry if that, this, my analogy doesn't make sense, but this is the way I view it. On September 30th, let's say her enrollment is 242, and to keep that 242 for the remainder of the year, right? And regardless of how many students move into her school, she can only go up to a certain number, or move out of her school, the school system would do, would, would pay out that 242 for the remainder of the year. These are all options that can come forward to you. And they need to come forward as, as specific options so that you can have the pros and the cons to those. I would have an argument against that, but Ms. Jackson has an argument against it as well. And there is something around, do other charter schools have that enrollment that at certain point you cap it? Yes, some do. Some also have different levels of flexibility, and we can bring that information to you. But I think the question for me is, let's work through the specifics, because these high-level conversations sound good in these settings, but they don't work when the printer was purchased and needs support from IT, and IT has no idea. Or, you know, all of these levels of details, and I think that's what is important. And you hear from Ms. Jackson also requesting the board to be part of these conversations of the, of the details. What you'll hear from me overall is, if anything needs to happen for '25, '26, having worked in a charter school, having ran a charter school, having ran several school systems and running this one is, we need to get into the details now if there's anything being proposed to the board, because the board ends their meetings at the end of June, which is a blink away. And making this happen with the level of detail is going to take time. And that's my caution, if we don't think about it, we'll be cleaning up some things in the, in the backend. But I do think, and I will issue, because the board's contract allows me this flexibility, some additional flexibility for Ms. Jackson to be able to fill up her gas tank at some point next year, because that is, impacts her school differently than any other school in the school system.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. I guess my next question would be to your point to Ms. Jackson. Do you have a plan based on these four pieces here? Do you have the details that Dr. Navarro is asking for?
So specifically with enrollment, I do have a proposal that I would talk through with the CCPS team. Again, I do believe we need to separate out the charter agreement into those three separate documents. So this is my thought as how we should move forward. And then when it comes to specific details, if, you know, with technology or the enrollment count and things like that, I have ideas and proposals, but we would have to come to an agreement before anything was signed.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. So Ms. Jackson, I'll first start off with, thank you so much for the presentation. I continue to stand by the fact that. Speak into the mic? Okay, I was trying to be cute and kind of lean into it, but I need to actually hold it. So I was starting off by saying that I appreciate the presentation, and will continue to stand by the fact that Pissoda has elevated the arts in the middle school kind of sector across our county. And so still applaud all of the efforts of Pissoda, but recognizing that as we get into implementation, yes, there are going to be some growing pains. And I think that's what we're experiencing, is trying to right-size and figure out what's the best way of moving forward together. So, appreciate the presentation from both you and Ms. Miller. Ms. Warren asked an amazing question, and that was actually one of mine. So, thank you so much. I will only have two questions for you. The first was, on your presentation specifically on Slide 8, you noted some of the, the grow areas and some deltas that you had captured from like operational challenges. But it was most so, more so from the teacher perspective, which I really appreciate it. But I would also like to hear if there was anything from students and families in terms of ways that Pissoda can grow, change, and evolve. Do you have anything that you're able to provide to us that may not have been on the slide that you can just speak to?
Absolutely. And I can certainly follow up with another artifact. And actually, the CCPS team will receive this as part of our annual accountability site visit and review that's coming up May 6. But I, we have, I can share the results. I have a summary of the results from our mid-year surveys from families and from scholars. But some of the things that we hear in terms of grow happen to be with just our physical plant, that it's too small, we need something bigger. We don't have a true gymnasium in the building. We have our cafe area that we, it's a multipurpose use. We also use it for PE, and then we have our outdoor space. We don't have a true performance space. Many of our performances either happen at one of the other middle schools in the county or a high school. We've partnered with the Indian Head Black Box Theater. So it's been an opportunity, we look at it as an opportunity to connect with the community and partner with community organizations. But as an art school, we should have a, a true performance space. So we get that a lot. It's, it's small, it's kind of tight. With, and we hear that from our scholars, and then from our parents and guardians. We hear about our, do we have enough teachers? Do we have enough staff? We hear about, I'm trying to think of another specific example that I haven't mentioned. I would say overall communication, are we communicating the right information? We, we have several communication methods. Our principal, and I applaud him, he actually sends weekly newsletters to families. But they, we still will hear, you know, about communication as a pain point. So are we communicating the right information? And when we have events or things like that, are we communicating that enough ahead of time? So those are some of the other grows that we hear from scholars and from families.
Thank you, thank you. My second and last question, if you can just break down a little further. You mentioned the spending, like needing to ensure that the students who are in place by September 15th are accounted for for budgetary purposes. But there was also something additional in terms of quarterly counts. And as those may fluctuate, you know, what that either decreased allocation from CCPS to you, to Pissoda may be. Can you just clarify that for me? I think I may have been a little lost in the sauce there.
Sure. The other, one other grow that we hear from families is transportation. That's always, and I think that's across the county, is always something that comes up, just that shuttle process. And then in terms of your, your next question, across the state, I think Charles County may be, and this is the information that I'm referencing from the Maryland Alliance of Public Charter Schools, Charles County may be the only county that allocates the quarterly dispersment, so the quarterly per-student allotment, based on the prior quarter's enrollment. So if we start off at 200 students, we get 200 times the per-pupil amount. And then say that next quarter, we only, we have 200, or excuse me, we have 150. That following quarterly dispersment will get 150 times the per-pupil allotment. Whereas what happens in other districts is that at that September count date, that federal count date, if you have 200 students, then you divide 200 times that per-pupil amount into the four quarters, and that's what you receive. And then at the end of the year, if you do have drop-off, so if you do have students that leave the district, then they call it true-up. They true-up what your dispersment should have been based on an average of your, of your, your per-pupil or your enrollment, your total enrollment throughout the year. And so that helps schools, charter schools, especially small, single-site charter schools like ours, because now you can project, we know we're going to have this amount of money coming in. this amount of money coming in each quarter. And then we also have the expectation, as we're tracking enrollment throughout the year, we know, okay, this is likely how much we're going to need to either pay back to the school district or how much less we'll receive at the beginning of that next year because of the true-up, because we're tracking our enrollment throughout the year. And so the way that it's currently structured with us getting our quarterly dispersments based on the prior quarter's enrollment, it makes it difficult. Of course, it's our goal to retain as many students as possible. But it happens inevitably where we are losing scholars. And so it's hard for us to be able to project how many students we'll, we'll lose throughout the school year. And so we do our best with our projections. And actually, when we do our annual budget, we do an internal budget that, where we are actually decreasing our enrollment so that we can kind of project how, how much funding we'll receive each quarter. And so we, we try to put some safeguards and do some what-if scenarios and things like that. But I know that being able to track our quarterly dispersments based on that count date would help us tremendously with our budgeting.
And Dr. Navarro, perhaps if you or Ms. Acton could clarify, so is there a reason why perhaps we do the quarterly adjustments as opposed to waiting till the end of the school year?
Yeah, I think Karen can talk a little bit about how we do it. The other thing is, remember, in some charter schools, kids can come in and out. So it's a little bit different than the agreement that we have where kids can't come in, they can't, they can't come back in. Kids can leave Pissoda, but they can't come in until certain points throughout the school year. So it, it's a little bit of a disadvantage in that if, for example, if you, if, I'm looking at Chris's PowerPoint, if Pissoda's enrollment on September 30th was 243, they're allowed to go up to 250, let's say 255, because we're going to probably move that up to 255. And the school system pays all year for, at least says, we're going to pay you on quarterly payments for 243 because that's the, the number that you had at September 30th. It really, what the syst, what the school is doing is sort of giving the, the system, Pissoda, a loan for the year for students that would have left. So I'm paying equal amounts even though your enrollment will have gone out throughout the year. And just as a reminder, if a student enrolls from the waitlist of Pissoda that is not a CCPS student at that time, we don't get funded for it. So the school system then pays an additional cost to it. Karen, can you talk a little bit about how we do the reconciliations? Because it is, it is part of the reason why I'm also going to, I am working through how to, I don't know how to say it any better, fill the tank back up in terms of students. Because, you know, paying back what that payment is, but also having the full enrollment is a maximization of the, of the taxpayer dollars. Paying for a certain number of kids, but having the enrollment potentially fall way below that and carrying that additional dollars without having all the kids butts in seats, I think is problematic, right? It's problematic for the reconciliation component. So that's why I say, one of the ways I look at it is, how do you fill Pissoda's enrollment right back up so that when she, when the school gets their next reconciliation, they're back up to maybe even higher than their September 30th numbers? Because they can go up to whatever their maximum numbers are. And that gives that real funding in time for who's actually sitting in the building during that time, at least a closer. But Karen, can you talk a little bit about how we do that process now?
I wanted to make a comment directly in response to what you were sharing. What is challenging with the funding going back and forth when it's based on the enrollment instead of that count date is that when we build our budget, we build our budget with consideration of our staff allotment. So while we, we say we, we staff our building for 250 students, and then, yes, we lose students and we're down to 240 students, we still have staff for 250. So we lose that funding, but then we're still required to pay for, we lose the funding because we have less children, but we're still required to pay for our staffing for 250. And so now we're into this challenge because, you know, we're trying to make ends meet, make sure everyone gets paid, make sure our bills get paid and everything else. Because that's what our, our staffing and budget model represented, but now we have less students, so.
Yeah, and I think that's, and that's a very good point in that, you know, you're, you're, you're still paying salaries throughout the year, but in the, in sort of my view of it is, you increase the students, which bring in the money back to Pissoda, and you keep your student-to-teacher ratios. Because you, you know, you're going to, you're going to make an educated bet, you know, in your budget, 80 to 85% of your budget is just salaries, like the school systems. It's just the same thing. 80 to 85% is just salaries. So if you take, that you have 250 kids and you have 85% of the salary just going to go towards salaries. And if you lose kids, then the question is, at which point do you fill the tank back up? Meaning you get more kids in, which bring you more funding, which is a little different than just saying, keep me whole no matter how many kids I have throughout the year because I have to make my salary payments. Sure, we all do, but we got to keep enrollment also in there. So it's got to be two things. It's got to be, how do we make you whole with the money, but also by bringing students in? And instead of doing the reconciliation at the end of the year, because then you have no way of getting kids in to the school. And that is, that's the way the money walks back in. And so I think a major area that we need to think about giving you more flexibility on is getting kids who bring the money back in at some point throughout the year.
I have a related question, Dr. Navarro. Pardon me one second, Ms. Acton. To that point, after the September...
Nobody wants to hear from me.
I know. We're just going off on all these different tangents. But yeah, to the point about the flexibility, is there a difference? Because Pissoda is this dual-curricular with arts and academics, is there a difference with bringing a student in, let's say October 1st versus any other school? And, you know, that...
Can I ask to answer that?
No, why not? We're all, we're all over the place.
So, you know, there are certain requirements for students to take certain classes throughout the school year. And because Pissoda is a smaller school, and, you know, they only offer certain courses at a certain time of year, one being health. And that's because it's a small school. They don't have the staffing to be able to offer health throughout the school year. So that has some implications, too, about students who are coming in. Because if they're coming from schools where they don't, haven't had health yet at their home school, that kind of impacts a well-rounded curriculum for students as well. So that's something that we've also had conversations with.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Acton?
So Ms. Jackson is right that her quarterly payments go up and down based on her enrollment. So what we are doing is a quarterly reconciliation. What Ms. Jackson is suggesting is that we forward fund, basically, because she isn't able to add students, and she will lose students, they all. You know, we lose students, she loses students. We would be forward-funding her. We would be having those students back in our school system, but not having the funding for it, right? Because we've, we've given the funding to Pissoda. And then there's going to be an adjustment at the end of the year, which could be significantly high. So, you know, I think that that's a concern that we need to address. Dr. Navarro and I have had numerous conversations as well on this enrollment issue because her numbers are small to begin with. So she, if she doesn't have complete enrollment, it is financially very hard for her to be successful. So I do think it's something we have to wrestle with. Dr. Navarro's suggestion, as far as allowing it to, to adjust mid-year, would allow Ms. Jackson the opportunity to get that funding back. But the budget that we build is based on full enrollment. So it puts Ms. Jackson out of deficit when we're having to make those adjustments. There's, you know, there's no way around that. So either way, you're reconciling. It's just, do you want to, to forward fund? Which would make it easier for her to, to plan. But at the, I'm, I'm sorry to say this, but I'll just say it. She's keeping track of, of the enrollment. So she kind of can change her budget throughout the year if, if she's tracking it. Or I would be glad to help her through that, to plan for the next quarter ahead of time. So, I mean, to me, at this point, until we get to a point that there is additional funding, that she has a contingency fund, which she doesn't have, I think it, it puts Ms. Jackson at a disadvantage to have that adjustment at the end of the year. That's just my thought. Because we're giving her money that she can't spend and shouldn't spend.
Well, a related question, Ms. Acton. If I'm not mistaken, Pissoda's budget, looking at this, is just under $3 million approximately?
I think it was $3,550 this year.
Or a little over $3 million. So I need, if, even if you don't have the exact, can you just put this into monetary terms for us? If the enrollment drops from, let's say, 250 to 240?
So she's lost about $270,000 this year with the enrollment drops.
Okay. Yeah, that's significant.
That's significant.
I'm just trying to, you know, quantify it. All right, where were we? Sorry, will you finish, Ms. Smith? Okay, Ms. Vice Chair Cream, or Mr. Hancock, I apologize.
It's okay.
It's hard to see.
I know, it's hard with this, this setup.
Like the little circle, it's easier to see people.
And I want to add, with the, that's the, I say that's the grossed amount that we receive because some of that we don't see. We don't net that because it's, for instance, we get 2% taken off the top for administrative fees, so that stays with the district for the support that we receive. And then like transportation, that's taken out from the top, we don't see that. Of course, staff salaries and wages. So even though it says 3.5, what we really see is much less. And that's used for textbook and curriculum, you know, all of those things. So, yes.
Very much understand.
Any emergencies.
Yes.
So this brings up a good point. So what we're talking about is a budget versus cash flow, right? So we are paying the salaries and the benefits for all the staff, regardless of what enrollment number Ms. Jackson has. But it does affect her cash flow and how much cash she's receiving for other items, such as contracted services, rent, you know, utilities. All of those things has to come out of that additional amount. So we start with what the enrollment is. We take out her salaries and her benefits since we're paying for that. And we do adjust, we true that up every quarter because there can be changes in that as far as substitutes and all of that good stuff. That's part of that quarterly adjustment. But we take that off the top, transportation off the top, the nurse comes off the top. And, you know, then, then we get down to what she has allotted. And then when we have the quarterly adjustments, that comes off of that, and then there's a net. So it's, it is quite a process. I mean, from, from my perspective, you make it, you know, at the end of the year, my job gets a little bit easier because this is a heck of a thing that we do every quarter. But like I said, I really think that it, it could hurt Ms. Jackson to do it at the end of the year.
Okay, and if they're not, sorry, one second, just to that point, if they're not able to then pay it back, then what? Then I just, that's an actual question. Do we, CCPS would just have to...
We absorb the cost, yeah.
Right. I mean, unless there's additional funding that, that Ms. Jackson has, which I know she has your, your foundation and whatnot. But, you know, basically, we would have already paid for staffing. And, and, you know, we're still transitioning all the bills to Oracle. But at that point that they're in Oracle, we will have paid all her bills for her. So, you know.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hancock, I apologize.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for your presentation, Ms. Jackson. I have a question. We're talking about the, the quarterly reconciliations. And so your total roughly per-pupil funding is $15,500. Of that, $12,191 is allocated through the blueprint. So with the, with the blueprint having such, you know, strict, you know, strings attached to it, could we even get outside of that quarterly arrangement? I mean, is, does, does the blueprint kind of hold us to, to being, to where we can't be any more flexible than what we already are, if that makes sense?
I wouldn't say with the frequency of the dispersments. So are you meaning with the blueprint, could you honor that count date?
So that's what I'm saying. So like if we, if we start out the year with 240 and we just pay you for the, that 15.5 for 240 students for the whole year and don't, don't check a count any quarter, then we get to the end of the year and find out that we went from 240 to 220. So there's 20 students that we allocated blueprint money for that's, that's gone. So then we would rely on you to pay that money back, but then...
So we can always, the blueprint does tie our hands, there's no doubt about it. But we can always give more to a school. But that means that that money comes from other CCPS students, and we may fall short in those schools. But giving Ms. Jackson more is not the issue. But I do want to talk about that for a minute because the blueprint says 75% of the certain funding categories need to follow the student. And so we, we do that. And the minimum is a 75%. What Dr. Navarro agreed to last year was 94% for Pissoda. It still was a decrease, though, from the previous year. But, you know, Dr. Navarro did agree to pay a higher amount to try to make it better for Pissoda. And we also did a comparison, just for information's sake, between Pissoda, the per-pupil amount, and what it would be for Milton Summers and also PICO. And Pissoda actually came in the middle of that. PICO was the lowest, Pissoda was in the middle, and Summers was slightly higher. But they're very close. So, you know, we're not trying to hurt Pissoda, but it kind of is a result of the, the lone enrollment that she has. It's hard, you know, it's hard to make those numbers work, even if she's fully enrolled.
I understand. My other questions have been answered, are probably going to be answered, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Dr. Smalls and then Ms. Bella Washington. And you, yes, ma'am. Oh, sorry.
So I'm looking at Slide 15. And it says the, about the creation of a working group to finalize the contract. Did you have a timeline? And I'm think, also thinking about what Dr. Navarro said, excuse me, when she was talking about ending in June or something, when we were talking about that. So do you have a timeline of what that would look like to have those, those serious conversations?
Yes. So at our earliest convenience, we have been discussing our current agreement. We have not, prior to this, prior to recently, had a moment to talk about separating it to the three different documents. But I know, I mean, just considering you all stopped meeting the end of June, we, I would want to meet immediately. And again, to have representatives from the Board of Ed on that working group to discuss changes. Because I would, if possible, I would like for those changes to be implemented for the upcoming school year, so, yeah.
Was that it, Dr. Smalls? Did you have something else, or?
It's so close.
Oh, go ahead, grab that, yeah.
It's so close. So I was just wondering, did you have something specific in mind?
Like actual dates?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I haven't spoke to Christina Miller about those dates, but that's something we can discuss, you know, this week even.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Smalls. Ms. Bella Washington?
My question is on the transportation because that's the one that, that seems to be, that other schools are, are in alignment with in, by you signing that contract, you're not in align with. So my question is, is there an issue? No, 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 not an issue. Is there a requirement for a document to be given to us for transportation? Is it in any other charter schools that says that they have to give a document to the school board to make a decision on whether we say, agree to transportation, be out, or transportation to be provided by the school?
Such as a transportation plan?
Yeah.
Not that I've seen. For, many charter schools in Maryland actually don't offer transportation. And so, you know, their families have to find their way to the school. Again, most of the charter schools in Maryland are in Baltimore City, so they have public transit. For the schools that are in some more suburban areas like ours, they, they provide their own shuttle service and they have satellite pickups to do that. And so they do have their own transportation plan. I don't know that it was required that they provide that to their authorizing body, but because they're in a more suburban... but because they're in a more suburban and they were able to either contract with a vendor or purchase their own shuttles, they created a transportation plan for their families with these satellite pickups. And they receive funding from the school district. Because they're not contracting with the school district for transportation, the district actually includes that transportation funding as part of their per pupil. So they receive that funding and that helps support their internal transportation costs. And so, I have not seen that it's required. It's certainly not part of the Maryland charter law that transportation be required or that a plan be provided to the authorizing body. I think it's left up to the local governing body on how they facilitate that, but it's not part of the charter law.
Just say one thing about, because we were talking about blueprint before. You know, blueprint funding is an equity-based funding model. And so, my concern to you as the board, without a transportation plan, and my concern for, you know, advocating for Ms. Jackson as well, is if we don't have a plan in place, that could change the students that come to the school, right? And each, because we have an equity-based model for funding, each kid brings a different amount of money when we're looking at how much Posoda gets. So if we don't have a transportation and plan in place, you could have more affluent students that are attending Posoda, which means they're going to get less money per student because they have less farm students. So that's my biggest caution when we talk about not having a transportation plan, because I would hate for Ms. Jackson to receive less money when it comes to her per-student allotment. Again, just keep in mind, blueprint funding, and I'm blaming Mr. Hancock for bringing it up, but that's always in the back of our heads. It's an equity-based model. And we, and Posoda gets more money for the higher number of farm students that they have at their school.
Okay. I want to clarify something real fast. I'm not saying that Ms. Jackson should not provide a transportation plan, which I know she will because of all of that that you just said. My question was, was it required for other charters to have one and give to us?
We can get back on that. I can certainly reach out to my colleagues around the state. But there are schools, there are charter schools in Maryland that provide transportation to their students. And I know that we got Mr. Tonkins from Transportation polled all of the transportation coordinators around the state. And so certainly, we can find what their charter agreement says. And I don't want to speak on behalf of Mr. Schwartz, but that charter agreement that was written between Posoda and the Charles County Board of Ed was a document that was similar to other charter agreements around the state. But whether or not there is an actual transportation plan required, we could certainly find that out and get examples of them.
Okay. Because I thought Ms. Jackson said the other charters did not have what she had in her charter, that they was able to find their own transportation.
Some do, some do.
Can I chime in really quick?
Oy.
So, I'll ask Eric to go back to the law referenced by Ms. Jackson in her PowerPoint, what the law says. But I will tell you that the law in Maryland is at one level. And then you go into a contract with the Board of Education where you delineate specifics. And so this board can look to amend its contract around transportation. One thing the board has to remember is there will be funding that is supposed to go towards transportation that if this board decides can be used for other things, like purchasing staff, right? Additional staff to do different things. That is a contract that you, that the board currently has with Posoda. There were conversations around, the big issue is who has access to Posoda with or without transportation, or with a limited transportation hubs, what, you know, in this setting, which is, you know, not an urban setting. And I think that's the piece that's important to understand. Eric, can you just, I'm sorry, Mr. Schwartz, can you again explain our take on the transportation issue for the board, so that the board understands why we, for us, having a very clear plan matters, and why any changes to the current transportation language with Posoda and what we see as concerns in terms of impacts, but what the law actually says, and then the contract that supersedes that law as well?
And I want to add, it's important to note that we pay for transportation for our full enrollment, although our full enrollment does not use transportation services. So that's another challenge that we experience, where we may have a little over fifty percent of our scholars actually utilizing CCPS transportation, but we're still being charged for our full total enrollment. So that's another, Ms., Dr. Navarro mentioned the devil's in the details, that's another detail that is important to the conversation.
Yep.
So much in so little time. The law does not require us to provide transportation services to charter schools, and I think Ms. Jackson has pointed that out. That's not the issue here. When the board adopted this charter for this school, it determined that the only fair way and equitable way to address enrollment at the school was to allow every student in the county to have access to the school. And the way to do that was by allowing any student who wanted transportation services to get transportation services. Ms. Jackson's right, not all students are using transportation services, but the cost to Charles County Public Schools is the same, whether fifty percent, seventy percent, thirty percent use it. We're still providing transportation services throughout the county. That's true for all of our students in our county. Whether they take the bus or not, we're providing a transportation service, we're offering it to them. And so, it's not based on the number of students, it's based on the amount of money that we as a school system generally provide each of our students equally for transportation, which was about, at the time of the charter, just about a thousand dollars per student. Any student in the county, about a thousand dollars of their per pupil amount of cost go towards transportation. And that's why we picked that amount for this particular school. And when we looked at actually what it does cost us to provide those services, we did a recent examination of that, the amount it cost us to provide those services actually was about a thousand dollars. Now, if Ms. Jackson has a plan to provide services to students in her school, whether it's to all students in the county or some students, we haven't seen that plan. But if she has a plan that she wants to come forward with, and the board determines that's a possible equitable plan to allow for, that's something we can certainly discuss at that time. We haven't seen any particular plan. But I will caution you and her, as we're looking at the cost of transportation services, we're doubtful that she could provide transportation services to every student in the county cheaper than how we're doing it currently. And if she can, great, we'd like to see the plan and we can certainly work with her on that.
I'll just add, right now, the way our charter agreement is written is that whether we have a separate plan or not, we still can't implement it because of how our charter agreement is written. So I'm advocating for flexibility, so that when we do have a plan or if we decide to consult a transportation advisor or have, or not offer it at all, we do have the ability to bring that to you all for approval. This mic is falling. But right now, our charter agreement does not even allow that. And also written in our charter agreement is that with transportation, we're required to use Charles County Public Schools, which now goes against the recent case ruling, is that, you know, it's a buyback service that we're forced to implement within our charter agreement. But that actually, again, is against that case ruling that's listed in my PowerPoint.
Okay. Last question. This is for Dr. Navarro. When a student leaves the school, are students able to enroll after they leave?
No. So, so students were only able to enroll up until the September fifteenth date this coming, this year. And after that, any student that leaves the school, the school, whether to a private setting, homeschool, or another CCPS school transitions in. So she can't bring back any students. Actually, we have brought back, I think, some students, I don't know if it was the first year or the second year, they wanted, they unenrolled and then they re-enrolled. Am I thinking, am I loopy now? Now at nine o'clock, maybe? But for the most part, the students leave Posoda and then no new students can come in, which is, I think, what Ms. Jackson is queuing up and I'm queuing up. That's a problem that we, that I have suggested on. We, every time a student walks in, they replenish the funding because they walk in with funding back to the school.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay. As Dr. Navarro pointed out, it is nine PM, colleagues. We're going to have to, at some point, let this go and put a pin in it. It's safe to say we will not be able to vote this evening. There are just too many variables, and I think we can reach agreement on that. With that said, Ms. Kramer, you said you had something?
I could just make a final.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, just a couple of things. Ms. Jackson, thank you for being here. Thank you for the detail that you provided in your presentation. I do appreciate that. As you mentioned, the board had asked for you to come back with some plans and some details. It just looks like, just candidly, we're just not there yet to be able to make a decision. I know, just speaking for myself personally, I would like to see more details, particularly where it comes to transportation, because I know you and I have talked before, and that is a concern that I personally have about transportation and being equitable in the county that we live in, because we're so spread out and certainly not like Baltimore City where students can walk to school or they can take the bus, et cetera. So definitely would just like to see more plans there before I would feel comfortable personally making a decision. So, and I would just also just add, for you to consider, if you haven't already, you know, sort of either surveying your current parents who may be returning or the community about their thoughts on, you know, the accessibility or the interest in Posoda, should you decide not to provide transportation in the future, just so you can kind of get an idea, get some feedback, you know, will you still have the interest that you do currently have? I think, you know, the offerings that Posoda, you know, has is still going to be there, but will it be accessible for families, particularly thinking about now how many parents have had to go back into the office, and so they don't have the flexibility that they did before, maybe to be able to drop off their kids or pick them up, because you guys get out pretty early, midday, you know, that's kind of hard if you're working, you know, downtown or something like that, so pick up your kid around two o'clock. So, yeah, I would just like to see more details of the plan. And definitely, also, if you haven't considered, you know, talking to families who leave Posoda and finding out, obviously, the ones that move out of the county and stuff like that, you know, as was mentioned, that's no different than the other schools. But we have seen some feedback from some families who have left for other reasons. And just, if you haven't, I would, you know, encourage you to kind of look at that, to see if there are some, you know, opportunities for grows there as well, as we look to the success of Posoda in the future. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'm in agreement. I'm not opposed to flexibility, understand why you feel that way and why it would be necessary. My concern is having something in place so that we don't unintentionally cause you further pain points down the road. That's my number one concern. If we, for example, remove transportation, which sidebar, I'd be curious to know if the parents have been surveyed or, you know, if that discussion has happened, and are they aware that it's something that may not be offered anymore? And would that affect those that are currently bringing their students or those who may want to in the future? Because equity is a huge consideration for us. And I would hate for a student who otherwise would shine and do very well, because that does well for all of us, not be able to attend Posoda due to transportation issues. And for those, particularly on the western side, as, you know, my colleagues in District Two, I'm sure can speak to, that is a real consideration for them. You know, it's not where, you know, it's really a walkable zone, so to speak, for most. So that, you know, for me, is something I would definitely want to see. Anything that you're proposing, and, you know, feel free to nod, board members, I'd like to see the specifics. And before we come back, I'd like for CCPS to flush it out and to consider the financial implications. And in particular, I want to know, just to make sure it's not something that will inadvertently hurt Posoda as much as possible. So I don't want us to kind of rush and say, yes, we have an agreement before the end of the school year, which sidebar, we'd have to have at least three presentations to the public, possibly maybe two additional ones. So it's not something that we could say, okay, you present next month and we vote at the same time. So that's just another consideration, because it is, you know, a discussion we have to have in the public. So just trying to give you some parameters around why we would need to have this as ironed out as possible. And just in a related point, for your protection, as well as CCPS, have you had an opportunity for your attorney to review these things? And is this something that your attorney is recommending based on what you presented?
Yes.
It is, okay. All right, I just want to make sure of that. So those are my considerations. I'd like to ask that you all resume discussions. Typically, the board is not involved in any negotiations with EACC, with AFSME. That's not a role or function that we don't serve in that space. We will make the decision once the, you know, everything is flushed out. But in terms of negotiations, that's not something that we've ever done. We've asked to observe and been very politely been told, it's not usually helpful, just being very candid with you. And so, you know, I don't know if anyone wants to weigh in on that, but to make an exception in this case, I'm a little uncomfortable. If anyone has some alternate, you know, observations on that, but I just personally don't feel like that would be a good idea. If you want to weigh in quickly, Ms. Bella Washington?
No, I definitely agree with Madam Chair, simply because if a decision is made, and if we're in the decision, it's biased. So it could not play either way. So it's best that you have the discussion with the board, with the school, and then, once they have come up with a decision, then it comes to us and then we have fresh eyes and we can make a decision. So I wholeheartedly agree with you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bella Washington. So, oh, Ms. Smith, you have another point?
Just briefly, because I know we're out of time, but definitely support your position. I think, Ms. Jackson, you've presented us with a great deal of information to consider in terms of how do we ensure that this is something that works well for Posoda as well as for CCPS? So to our chair's point, definitely would love to see some of the details fleshed out. And Dr. Navarro raised it as well, just to ensure that we're making a decision that works well for both parties.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Oh, Dr. Smalls, you have something?
Now that you explained that timeline, what does that look like for her?
We're going to be hanging out on the weekends. We have talked on the weekends. So, you know, running a charter school, I will say, having done this, and I remind everybody here that I've ran and I worked in a starter school, and Ms. Jackson learns every day more and more what it's like to be an operator. Listen, I have ten bosses and they have given me a clear thing. I need to bring something back. And we need to bring something back. So we're going to need to come back and bring some options back to the board on the details of the plan. And it'll have a perspective from staff on the concerns and risks that we see. And it'll have some perspectives from Posoda's perspective on why the need is there. Or perhaps, my goal is that we can come to some kind of agreement. Our goal is always to come to the board with an aligned agreement on language or action to take forward. So we'll, you know, we have graduations and a whole bunch of great things happening, so who needs sleep? Ms. Jackson knows that. She hasn't been working off sleep for two years, so we'll figure that out.
Sleep is highly overrated. And one point of clarification, and correct me if I'm mistaken, Mr. Schwartz, I saw that this is a report item, so we've already had information report. Next step would be action. So in theory, if I'm understanding correctly, if, you know, Posoda and CCPS were able to flush something out, we may be able to have this either at the May meeting or May work session? I don't want to set an artificial timeline, but I just want to, you know, provide some context.
Our policy does not require us to have three meetings for a contract amendment or change.
Okay.
However, having said that, we want the public to have enough time for input. And I think they've had plenty of time. We've had meetings, we had a presentation in December, and since then, we've had presentations. So I think you have given the public plenty of knowledge and information about this. We don't need the three meetings for contract changes, though.
I appreciate that. So it is possible, if we can get something hammered out in May, that we could vote on it before the end of the school year. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Jackson. I know this is quite a bit of work on your part. And thank you also, Ms. Miller and Ms. Acton.
Yes, thank you all.
All of the hours that you all are putting in, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right. So moving on then, and it's fair to say that no one wants to add thirty additional minutes to do NSBA updates, so we will squeeze that in, we will postpone, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You say you're not sleeping here tonight? No?
Yeah.
You're okay?
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Next up, the renaming of Smallwood. Is there a motion on the floor? Yes, Ms. Smith?
I'm trying to find my D2 counterpart.
Oh, Ms., I know. You still with us, Ms. Smith? Oh, Ms., I know, you, you still with us, Ms. Thomas? Yes, ma'am.
Right, right, right.
Yes.
Okay. Um, yes, I would like to make a motion for my colleagues to accept the recommendation, uh, as discussed last meeting, that the General Smallwood School be renamed, uh, Glymout?
Glymout.
Glymout, excuse me, Glymout.
Yeah. Glymout.
Glymout Middle School, yes, that is correct.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, a second, and by Ms., um, Brenda Thomas. Is there any discussion, any comments? Ms. Butler-Washington?
I know I have, I talked to, I've talked to Brenda and, um, she gave me her, um, explanation of what she wanted to name it. And I'm just asking the question, because I talked to you, Madam Chair, about it, um, about the, uh, Raph E. Patterson naming, because he was the principal there. Uh, he's a 20-year veteran, um, and he, uh, was, um, known in the community, um, for, um, supporting, um, a lot of the African-American young boys at the time, because there wasn't a lot of, of teachers that happened. So, um, if we could entertain just talking this, because I, I do feel, um, compelled to name a school of a road sign, and when we had a teacher who was actually in the school, the principal of the school, and to add salt to it, you know, he was a veteran. So, just wanted to make sure that I put that on the record, because I didn't want it to be, uh, overlooked. And I did speak to Raph and he had no knowledge of, of someone asking him that he want his, um, um, father to be named. He just said, "I'm just going to say, I, I, I don't know what you're talking about." And that's all he said to me.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
That's that.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Amisha Thomas and then Ms. Jamila Smith.
I'm going to leave it right on the stand. Um, I, I really would like to just say that I appreciate all the work that the team at, um, Smallwood did, uh, those, the parents, the, the staff, the students and the information that they brought forward. And I really appreciated that they had autonomy to, to, you know, bring forth some names and to give us their opinions. And so, at, at this point, I think, you know, I really can support what my colleagues have put forward. It's Glymout, if I'm saying that properly, uh, because, because I really do think that speaks to, um, the local vicinity. We've done that before with Billingley and some other elementary schools. And so, I can, I can support that and definitely because that, that team did a lot of work. I'm not sure if this gentleman's name came up before, but that team had already done a lot of work. And so, I don't want to, you know, kind of, uh, overshadow the work that they've done and, and then also kind of respect that they really felt strongly about geographical location. And so, I think that speaks to what our community has asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Jamila Smith?
No, thank you, uh, Ms. Thomas. That was some of what I was going to add. And I think if it's helpful for my colleagues, I know, I know we had previously discussed, like, why the name, uh, Glymout had came up. Uh, essentially, we had heard from the committee that came together, they were looking for something that wasn't a name, but perhaps, as you said, a geographical location. And they had gone in the direction that they wanted to find some pride in the western side of the county. But we had talked through that there is so much historical reference and there are so many, like, really exciting and great points of things that happened in the county, um, that we need to continue to bring to light, that respects and appreciates kind of what was happening in D2. So, just a bit of background. So, the Glymout area was bustling, it attracted a variety of wealth and prestige to that area. Uh, it was a resort area for both DC, Alexandria, as well as Georgetown, Wharf area. It also served as one of the largest river ports at that time. Uh, there's actually reports of President Hoover, as well as Maryland, Maryland Governor Ritchie, uh, fishing together back in the twenties in that area. So, when we heard from the students and from the community that they were looking for additional attention and prestige being brought back to that side of the county, the western side of the county, this was one of the names that came up. It had historical reference and grounding, but also appreciated that, again, this is something specific to the western side of the county. So, um, I'm hopeful that my colleagues will support it. Uh, and if passed, I'm really hopeful that the community will gravitate to it, adopt it and fall in love with it as it does reflect and represent kind of that specific area of the county.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone who, well, but before, just in the interest of time, I'm only going to ask people that haven't already spoken. I, I appreciate your, but we also have a motion on the floor. So, um, Ms., uh, Vice Chair Kramer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would just like to say, um, I appreciate the historical context provided by Ms. Smith and I know previously by Ms. Brenda Thomas, and I think it would be appropriate for the board to, um, support the decision by our two, um, D2, District Two representatives. Um, and adding to the fact that Glymout was on the original list, um, that was considered by the committee, um, and given its historical context to the area and that, uh, notable history that you gave there, Ms. Smith, as I said, and, um, formerly Ms. Thomas, who had given us some more information, um, at a previous meeting, I will support, uh, the name Glymout as well.
Okay. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet? And I give Ms. Butler-Washington one more opportunity to speak. Uh, well, one second, let me just double check. Anyone who has not spoken that wants to say anything? Okay, Ms. Butler-Washington, then we're going to vote.
I just want to clarify, um, since, um, someone said that they didn't know who this person was, that's, uh, Delegate Patterson, uh, husband, his, her late husband. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. All right. At this time, um, there's a motion on the floor made by Ms. Jamila Smith, seconded by Ms. Brenda Thomas, to rename General Smallwood Middle School Glymout Middle School? Am I saying it correctly? Glymout. Think glamour, Glymout.
I need to get that right.
Yes. Ms., Ms. Brenda Thomas told me what, Glymout Middle School. All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. And I can't really, okay, is that everybody on this side?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so it's, okay. All right, and opposed. All right, so the motion passes, nine, two, and any abstentions? Oh, I'm sorry. So, we have eight in favor, one opposed and one abstention. Yes, because everyone voted. All right. Thank you very much. So, General Smallwood Middle School will now be renamed Glymout Middle School, effective with the 2025-26 school year. Um, thank you for your patience, um, Mr. Heim. I know you in particular have given us a deadline by which you need to do what you need to do. So, yes. Thank you also, as been mentioned to the committee, for everyone who weighed in, who, um, provided input and feedback. Um, this is quite a historic day, um, for Charles County Public Schools, and, and I'll just leave that there, because I know there's, it's late and there's been a lot of debate on both sides, so we can address it at some other point.